Thomas Paine. Thomas Paine. Thomas Paine. Sam Adams. Sam Adams. Sam Adams. Benjamin Freitlin. Benjamin Freitlin. Benjamin Freitlin. These men spoke up for what they thought was right. From their courage came such documents as the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution of the United States. From their willingness to speak what was sometimes unpopular but right, we enjoy such liberties as freedom of speech, the right to keep and bear arms, and freedom of religion. There are those who still wish to oppress our freedoms, and there are still patriots willing to stand up and defend life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Men like Zeb Bell, who honor our founding fathers and what they stood for. It's now time for Zeb at the Ranch, speaking up and defending your freedoms. Brought to you by Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers, and all of the other great advertisers on the program. And now, Zeb Bell.
And of course, you've heard about Trump inviting the Pope for lunch on his mega yacht. Yep. The Pope accepted, and during lunch, a little wind blew the pontiff's hat off into the water. It floated off about fifty feet, and then the wind died down, and it just floated away. The crew and the security teams were scrambling to launch a boat to go get the hat when Trump waved them off, saying, "Never mind, boys, I'll get it." The Donald climbed over the side of the yacht, walked on the water to the hat, picked it up, and walked back on the water, climbed into the yacht, and handed the Pope his hat. The crew was speechless. The security team and the Pope's entourage were speechless. No one knew what to say, not even the Pope. But that afternoon, NBC News knew how to cover the story. Their banner headline read, "Trump Can't Swim." Good morning, everybody. Here comes Kate Smith, and God bless America, followed by a patriot with our pledge of allegiance. Morning, morning. Oh, good morning, good morning. Good morning to you, Zeb at the Ranch. I'm Zeb Bell with our major sponsor, your Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers. Great big fall tire sale going on at all seven locations. And our advertisers, like Western Way Services, always at your disposal. Call them, 734-6969. Right now, without further ado, here's our pledge of allegiance person. Good morning.
Good morning, young man.
Hey, buddy, how are you?
I'm rotten.
Okay. All right, give us the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, God bless you, Dal, and say hello to your shy, retiring wife.
She's sitting here laughing.
Okay, see you later. Bye-bye. And by the way, happy anniversary, too. And what?
Thank you.
Oh, and Lunch Bunch, we'll see you at Lunch Bunch. Don't forget that tomorrow, Lunch Bunch. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, buddy, thanks a lot. One of the nicest people and couple that I know right there. Thank you very much. Time for the weather, and the weather's brought to you by Cheney Flooring and Home Design. Wonderful people, Kyle and Whitney, all your carpet and flooring, kitchen construction, home decor items, whatever you need to make your house a home at Cheney Flooring and Home Design, 1228 Oakley Avenue in Burley. Look, look, look for that blue door. And don't forget, right now, this month of October, they're having a huge, that means really big, fall sale on everything is discounted in the store at Cheney Flooring and Home Design. Right now, here's the weather.
Well, we hit midweek stride, and weather for the rest of the week actually looks really nice. Partly cloudy skies is what we're expecting for today. High of fifty-three, tonight low of thirty-one. Tomorrow, partly cloudy and sixty, with an overnight low of thirty-four. Sixty-five under sunny skies for Friday and for the weekend. Looks like mostly sunny skies. Highs are gonna be in the mid-sixties. Yesterday's high was forty-sixty, overnight low was thirty-four. That is your weather for Zeb at the Ranch.
Gina, thank you very much, and I appreciate it. Brought to you by our friends. They've been really super to work with, and don't forget, they've got all kinds of in-stock tile on sale at Cheney Flooring and Home Design, 1228 Oakley Avenue in Burley. Look for that blue door. Oh my. Hey, I gotta tell you, we've got some real home run hitters on the program this morning, and one of which I want to really amplify, you need to listen to. He is worldwide known. He's one of the greatest conservative writers of our time, and I am blessed to have David Horowitz on our program at nine-thirty this morning, if all goes well with our connections. And we're looking forward to having him on the air. By the way, don't forget, November eighth, vote yes on HJR five. I want to encourage better communication and cooperation within our branches of state government. Vote yes on HJR five. Prevent state agencies from implementing overreaching and absolutely burdensome rules that negatively impact your life and leisure. Vote yes on HJR five. Don't forget, vote yes on HJR five. Paid for by Speaker Scott Bedekey, Representative Fred Wood, and Senator Kelly Anton. Also, we want to remind everybody that Jack Johnson's running for Twin Falls County Commissioner, District Three. Good man, very responsive to all of our needs, and he wants to maintain a balanced approach to economic and agricultural needs of Twin Falls County. So remember, when you go to the polls on November eighth, vote for Jack Johnson, Twin Falls County Commissioner, District Three. Paid for by Darren Kyle Treasurer for the Committee to Elect Jack Johnson for Commissioner. There you go. And now it's your turn. Calls welcome, 436-2244-1866-9274-587. I just, this morning, not more than twenty minutes ago, Deanne got a note from our dear friend Brigitte Gabriel, and you know who Brigitte is, and she's been absolutely out there beating the drum for all of us to be very, very aware of what's going on with the Muslims and the Islamic jihadists in our country. And she sent me a note saying that radical Islam, this is the headline of this note she sent me, has infiltrated the Kansas City school system. And I'm just gonna give you an excerpt of what she sent me this morning. This is so, I am furious that we have to cater to these people. And also, we're losing our culture and our political stance. One of the nation's largest school districts recently adopted a resolution banning what they call hate speech against Muslims, in addition to disgracing our nation by accusing of having a long history of racism and xenophobia. The Kansas City Board of Education stated in their resolution that discrimination on the basis of religion and against Muslims in particular is deeply embedded within our country's long history of racism and xenophobia. And the school board said, and this is something you all ought to listen to, "Our children are being brainwashed with far-left propaganda encouraged by radical Islamic groups like CARE." And the school board, listen, folks, come on. "The school board promises to provide special training for teachers and staff to make sure they have the right attitudes towards Muslims, as well as instituting school policies and setting an educational curriculum that reflects the values expressed in this resolution." In other words, they're gonna brainwash our kids and the teachers. I am outraged about this, and anybody that knows me knows doggone well, when I say I'm outraged, I'm teed off. I am really teed off. Your calls and thoughts on this, 436-2244-1866-9274-587. Don't forget our friends at Ramsey Heating and Electric at 2600 Overland Avenue in Burley. Hey, come on, folks, this is a story, I wasn't even gonna talk about this this morning. I didn't even know about it until twenty minutes ago. We have to change our ways and our thoughts against the culture that's trying to permeate itself here in our country. Ramsey Heating and Electric with furnace filters. Oh my goodness sakes, when you turn that furnace up in the morning, you want heat, you want it. No. Well, I'll tell you what, with those new furnace filters from Ramsey Heating and Electric, they can help you. Check 'em out, buy one or a case of twelve at Ramsey Heating and Electric at 2600 Overland Avenue in Burley. Open seven-thirty in the morning till five, Monday through Friday, where they provide warm winters and cool summers. Caller, I'll be right there. Do not hang up. I am coming. Hold on. Uh, don't forget, too, our friends at Denny's Restaurant. As you know, I made a bad mistake the last couple days. I said that Lunch Bunch was next week. No! No, that's wrong. It's tomorrow. I goofed, I goofed. I know, throw rocks at me. Denny's Restaurant, 611 Overland in Burley, and also 291 Poline in Twin Falls. We're gonna have Lunch Bunch tomorrow at eleven-thirty. And our thanks also to Smith's Food, Handsome Orchard, Walmart, Stokes Groceries for our door prizes, and you can enjoy great food at Denny's Restaurant. Breakfast, lunch, or dinner at America's Restaurant, 611 Overland in Burley, Denny's Restaurant. Caller, I'm sorry to keep you waiting. Good morning.
Morning, Zeb. You know, these people that are promoting this brainwashing of our children, who are they? Don't they realize what's happening right under our nose?
No.
These people are growing and growing and growing in force. I'm talking about these Muslims in general.
Yep.
They are gonna take our country over, and if Hillary Clinton ever gets in, she will finish the job for us.
Absolutely.
We cannot support that kind of stuff in this country any longer.
I am sick and tired, Tony. The left in this area, and believe me, I'm gonna start naming names on the program next week. I kept, this is very important, listen to me carefully. I kept the file of all the people that damned and condemned me in the newspaper, emails, everything, over eight years ago when Barack Obama was running for president the first time. And I kept all their names, and I kept everything that they said about me. And I'm gonna come out next week, and I'm gonna start naming names and condemn them for their absolutely frivolous statements that they made against me and against conservatives. But this bringing up that we're xenophobic, I'll tell you what, I don't. If I had my child in a school district right now, especially in Kansas City, I don't want anything passed that would stifle my child from saying anything or doing anything. We have the right of free speech, and I'll tell you what, I'm gonna keep speaking out, and they can call me a bigot, they can call me a racist, they can call me xenophobic, everything they want. I don't trust this situation.
Well, we better go down right here in Twin Falls. Twin Falls is the next sanctuary city, and we're gonna be overrun with all different kinds of people, and they're gonna be demanding, you know, people that have young children in school today, they're gonna find that children are coming home and saying, "Oh, Mom and Dad, guess what we got today? We got a brand-new copy of the Koran."
Yeah.
And they're teaching us all about socialism and communism, and how great it is.
Yeah.
This is what's happening right here, right now.
You know, Tony, one can only pray that we can stop this absolute assault on our culture, our constitution, our heritage, the way we live. I don't wanna change. I don't wanna transition. I love this country and what it stands for. I don't wanna see it infiltrated and taken over.
Well, these people in the United States have not been injured yet, and if these people take over, there's no changing it back.
I agree. Tony, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
God bless you. You know, everybody should be outraged, and what Tony said is absolutely very, very, very probable. You know, the day is coming where, "Oh, Zeb, you said this on the radio, we're gonna find you, we're gonna shut you down." I'm not at all immune to thinking that that can happen. I believe it can. I mean, I've talked to some other people, Hannity and others, and boy, their fears are like mine. Our freedom of speech is, boop, starting to pop like a balloon. Your thoughts on this? Come on, call, 436-2244-1866-9274-587. Excuse me, that doggone cough is back again this morning. Jim Patrick is running for reelection for District Twenty-Five Senator. Re-elect Jim Patrick. This man has the knowledge and the ability, and he is a gentleman when it comes to serving the state of Idaho. He's served on the Agricultural, Education, and Business Committees, and also on the J.FAC Committee. I have high respect for this man, and I'll tell you what, he is running for reelection for District Twenty-Five Senator, Jim Patrick. Paid for by Re-Elect Patrick for Senator, Treasurer, Jim Patrick. And also, quickly, don't forget, calls are welcome. Come on, folks, what kind of issues do you need to respond to? This is absolutely an attack on us and our culture. Don't forget Berry Equipment and Rental, and of course, all the equipment you need to get the job done right. Their location, bit my tongue, hold on a second, severe pain, one, two, three, there, I'm done. South Lincoln in Rome and Addison Avenue West in Twin Falls, and also 159 West Highway Thirty in Burley. Berry Equipment and Rental with a great big repair shop at the Burley location. And listen to this, zero, zero, nada, zero interest on forty-eight months if you buy any rental Bobcat equipment used. Holy cow, you can't get a better deal than that. Equipment rentals, equipment sales, all of this and more at Berry Equipment and Rental, Jerome, Twin Falls, and 159 West Highway Thirty in Burley. Really good people. All right, your thoughts? Come on, give me a jingle, 436-2244-1866-9274-587. By the way, make no mistake about it, Brigitte Gabriel has been on my program many, many times. We're friends, and I trust her. And I'll tell you, according to what her letter said here, quote, "Make no mistake, CARE, the Council on Arab and Islamic Relations in this country, is testing the waters to see how successful their efforts in Kansas City will be, and if such efforts go unfettered, they will spread like wildfire throughout the whole nation." Now, in this letter, she gave me the name of the Superintendent, Mark Bedell, and I am going to call, she also provided the number, and I am gonna let him know in no uncertain terms, but still be respectful, that I don't want this to happen in his school district, I don't want it to happen to any school district. And I'm going to give you the number of Superintendent Bedell's office. He is at area code eight-one-six, four-one-eight, seven-six-one-six. I urge you to call and tell them that this idiocy of basically trying to brainwash our students into accepting and not saying a word about Muslims in the school district or in the area absolutely will not stand. By the way, I want to say congratulations quickly to a man that has been a friend of mine for a long time, and I'm very proud that he is a friend of mine, and that is Cassia County Superintendent of Schools, Galen Smire. He has won the IASA 2017 Superintendent of the Year. The Idaho Association School Administrators gave him that award, presented him that award, and he is justly deserving of that award. And I absolutely salute him, and I urge you to call and say congratulations. Dr. Galen Smire has been with the Cassia County School System for over thirty-seven years, and above all that, he's my friend. Congratulations. All right, calls are welcome and appreciated, 436-2244-1866-9274-587. While I'm waiting for your call, then I'm really shocked that we haven't got the phone lines all lit up. I want to remind you, too, about Burley Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation. I go back tomorrow again, two times a week, yes, sir. Monday was pool day, tomorrow is dry land. Oh, boy. Yes, siree, and they have done so much to help me regain a lot of strength in that leg after I had that total hip replacement. I just absolutely swear by these folks. Burley Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation, 1263 Bennett Avenue, Suite Two in Burley. Now, here's the number. You call and make an appointment today, and they can help you get back to being you. Six-seven-eight-one-one-nine-one. Didn't get it? I'll say it again. Six-seven-eight-one-one-nine-one. Nick Greenwell and all the physical therapists, absolutely excellent, and I love that hydrotherapy pool. Let me tell you, Burley Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation absolutely can help you get back to being you. All right, calls are welcome, 436-2244-1866-9274-587. Tonight, tonight really, literally speaking, is Trump's last stand. It's his custer's last stand. He must be on the attack. He must lead the attack, and he has to win the attack against Hillary Clinton. It's his Alamo tonight. I'm telling you, he's got to throw away the personal attacks and go after issues. He, I'm telling you, Trump, shut your mouth when it comes to anything about past discrepancies. Jump over them, hurdle them, crawl under them, whatever you have to do, and go after the current issues. Go after the issues, and pin her down. Be direct, be on the attack. Her campaign people, this was something that I heard this morning, and it's just kinda chilling, really. And I'm sure many of you have listened to some of the excerpts on this tape. Some of her campaign people have been quoted on tape as saying, and I'm paraphrasing here, "We have to win this thing regardless of any rules or regulations." So in other words, it sounds to me like there's a little bit of, uh, oh, look out, here comes Trump attitude. But we have to win this thing, meaning the election, regardless of any rules or regulations. That's a little scary. They will do anything. Now supposedly, as of this morning, Hillary is leading Trump on the national polls. Again, I give about as much credence to these polls as I do, I better not say that. But supposedly, she's leading forty-five to thirty-nine. So that's what we assume to be halfway true going into tonight's debate. And, you know, I gotta mention this because it's so sick and perverted, and I think that people should know the low class or no class of the left and the Democrats. Listen to this, in Atlanta, Georgia, a Hillary bus was parked by a storm drain in Atlanta, Georgia, and they were emptying the bus's sewage, human sewage, into the storm drain. Now, that is about as low and no class as it gets. Ellen, here's another story, too. Another attack on Republican headquarters in Indiana. And I can't wait to talk to Beagle about that at nine-oh-six this morning. But, you know, this, this election, you keep hearing about, well, they did this. Well, North Carolina had a firebomb. Well, they broke the windows here. You don't hear the Republicans throwing rocks or firebombs or anything else, or emptying a bus's sewage tank into a storm drain, do you? No, it's the doggone Democrats. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
Hey, Zeb, how are you?
Upset.
Well, I'll tell you, all of these polls, I can't see how any of them are really real. I'm going through, like, the WikiLeaks dump the other day, there is proven, I mean, it is proven that these people are doing anything in their power to overturn this country. And it's, when's someone gonna hold them accountable?
Yeah.
Is anyone gonna stand up for what is true and what's right, and to preserve this country? We have people in public office that can do something about it. You know, the FBI, the CIA, they're not doing anything about it. And I just have a feeling that this whole thing is gonna happen, and there's nothing that the American people that are gonna be able to do about it. And it's, it's very frustrating. And I thank you for what you do in bringing up these issues, and I know that you don't go into speculative, uh, uh, thinking, but when, when the information is so vast, and there is so much, um, there's, there's so much proof that Hillary and the Clintons, along with many other people, are involved in this, I mean, when's someone gonna do something about it?
Yeah, you know, when you hear all these stories about lying and cheating and fraud, and then all of a sudden, these polls, these really, uh, uh, I think, kinda fraudulent from the get-go polls, everybody's got a different number, I don't put much credence in these polls. I can't, because I just don't expect to really get the truth. I don't think these people are telling us the truth. I think they can be as jaded as NBC, CBS, NBC, CNN, all of the different news medias are basically hovering around the fact that they want a leftist in the presidency, and that, of course, is Hillary Clinton. And I think anything and everything they feed to the American public is going to be jaded to the point where it's not exactly factual.
Yeah, well, I mean, they control, they're controlling the government right now, and when you see the, the payroll from the Clinton Foundation paying off Glenn Beck, paying off many of these people and many of these, uh, so-called media journalists that are basically just regurgitating whatever they are told, I mean, it's not real. You look at who bought up all these, go ahead, sorry.
No, I didn't say or do anything. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. You look prior to World War I, and you look at all the media that was bought up at that time, the seventy-five largest newspapers that were bought up and dragged us into that war. You look at World War II, and you look right now at what's happening in Russia. Russia, Putin is giving us a stern warning that we're gonna have war, and I think if Hillary gets in, that's all part of her plan. And, I mean, God, please take care of us.
Yeah. That's a great way to wrap up our conversation. God, please take care of us, and I believe that, and I've said that for a long time. Sir, thank you for your call. I gotta do a commercial break. Thank you very, very much. Caller number two on the air, I'll be right with you. Stand by. I want to remind everybody about Mount Harrison Audiology and Hearing Aids. I've gotta get over there and see this lovely doctor of hearing, and that's, of course, Christine Pickup. Absolutely, she knows everything about sound, everything about hearing, and please, if you're having a problem, get ahold of her today and have a hearing screening, and they can find the problem for you. Absolutely. Call three-one-two-zero-nine-five-seven. Right across from the Minnetoka Hospital Emergency Room, Mount Harrison Audiology and Hearing Aids, you call them today. By the way, don't forget, every Monday, we have a dozen cookies to give away. Oh, they're good. Oh, my, from Sophie's Chatterbox, 530 East Street in Rupert. Great restaurant, great bakery, and maybe you can be the winner. Listen Monday at eight-thirty-one for the question of the week for Sophie's Chatterbox and delicious cookies. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
You know, I, I go along with everything you said today. It's, I am so darn disappointed, and everybody keeps telling Trump to stay on the issues, which is the economy and that sort of thing. Can't we discipline him more to, you know, he's, well, I think we're all like that. If we get accused of something and it's not the proper thing, we'd like to fight back.
Yeah.
And they have really got Trump's number when it comes to retaliation.
Yeah, he has a, you know, I guess I'm guilty of this, too, and I'm gonna bear my chest, Keith. I'm the kind of a guy, I love interaction with people, and I love to sit and visit, but you know, I have a tendency, if you say or do something to me, or about my wife, or about my family, or whatever, I'll be the first one to stand up and say, "Come on, let's get it on." And I can understand where Trump's coming from. I really can. But in this case, he has got to be as hard-skinned as an armadillo, and he's gotta pay attention to the issues, he's gotta go on the attack, and he cannot let Hillary get under his skin.
But in most cases, when something like this comes up, you just have to try to retaliate, and the more you go, the deeper you get.
Yeah.
And it just seems like there's no way out of the swamp.
Yeah, I think that's a good way to put it. There's no way out of the swamp.
Yeah, we're gonna drain the swamp.
Yeah. Well, I don't think the Democrats would like what we'd find if we drained the swamp, I'll tell you that. Keith, God bless you, man, for your call. Always good thoughts. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
See you later.
Thank you, buddy. Calls are welcome, 436-2244-1866-9274-587. No, I'm really worried, really, really worried about, not so much this last debate, but we're down to twenty days, I'm just giving a round figure, before the election, and I'm worried about the American public. I'm worried about last-minute items like Obama yesterday. This I found totally funny. Caller, I'll be right with you. Obama came out with a big headline in the paper yesterday that said, "President Invites Donald Trump to Stop Whining." And then Obama said this, and tell me how ridiculous this is, quote, "If whenever things are going badly for you and you lose, you start blaming somebody else, then you don't have what it takes to be in this job," referring to the presidency. Here is the kettle calling the pot black, and that is a play on words, telling Trump, "Stop blaming everybody else." That is exactly... That is exactly what Obama's done through his whole presidency, is blame somebody else. How dare he come out and say to Trump, "Stop whining and don't blame anybody else, you take the blame." Gee whiz, Obama, heed the words that you're spewing. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
Yesterday, uh, Trump had a rally, and I guess it was, you know, his rally, his rallies are massive. And, uh, it was, I don't know, he was huge. And there was people out the streets who couldn't get in, and he was on message the whole time. And, uh, so, but you see, it's like, what Mike Crepo says to me, he goes, I said, "Why don't you speak up? You don't have any reason to worry, you'll always get reelected." I do, they just don't cover it. Well, maybe, you know, they're definitely not covering what Trump said yesterday, because he was on message. And so, but you see, it's just like, I come home at night, and I, if I'm not careful, I'll try to watch the weather, maybe a little sports. And, uh, you know, whether or not it's Channel Six and Boise, Channel Seven and Boise, or CNBC, they're beating the hell out of Trump, every one of them. And I wanna call the news directors, and in fact, I have in the past. And, uh, wanna call them and say, [bleep], you know, do you realize what you're doing? But you see, these people that try to tell us how to think, they sit there and they hide from whatever it is, or nobody ever questions them, and they get away with it. You know, like I said yesterday, if I called in every day, it was rude, bitter, tried to cuss, and eventually say, listen, you can't call back.
No, I, I hear everything you're saying. I'm sitting here, and I, I really admire some of the remarks you make, and I know, I know what you're talking about, there's a concentrated effort in the media to really push the Democratic and the left thought. And you know, it's kinda funny, I was reading the Local Times News when they were talking about this morning, the GOP lawmakers defending the record and the Democrats calling for a change. That was the headline of the story in the paper this morning. And then I looked down here, and it said, uh, uh, that they were basically leaning left Democrat in the audience. And I thought, really? Really? You know, I wonder, uh, I'm, I'm very much in favor of keeping the people like Lee Hyder, I'm very much in favor of keeping the people like Steve Harkins, I'm very much in favor of keeping the people like Senator Jim Patrick. And their competition, per se, is nothing, nothing and has nothing to offer in compared to what these gentlemen have tried to do for our state.
That's right, and that's the thing. Thank God we have a state that is still red, and, and, and these people listen to it. And, uh, you know, again, the best way to stake a statement is to go to the polls and, and win.
Absolutely.
For Trump. Thanks, Zed.
All right, buddy, thank you, I do appreciate it. Caller number two, I'll be right there. As you know, I've got a bill to pay here, and I gotta take care of it. Don't forget our friends with Ramsey Heating and Electric, and they're offering rebates on qualified Lennox Home Comfort Systems, whether it's a gas furnace and air conditioner or a heat pump, you and your family will enjoy the comfort. Don't forget, call them, six seven eight zero four five nine, and learn how Ramsey Heating and Electric and Lennox can save you money. Also, don't forget on Tuesdays, yesterday, we had Doctor History, and of course, we thanked Zach and the crew at Minnacashia Sales, thirteen twenty-one East Main Street in Burley, right across from the airport. Wow, they've got all the upgrade for your windows with the Western Windows to keep that cold winter air outside, and they can even help you with a contractor that can come over and install those. So call them today or stop in, eight seven eight two oh nine one, Minnacashia Sales, thirteen twenty-one East Main in Burley, sponsoring Doctor History. Oh, and by the way, caller, hang on just a second, I gotta get this in here real quick, our friends over at Ark Animal Hospital, wonderful, wonderful people, at seven fifty twenty-first Street, near Connection Credit Union in Hayburn. Well, Dr. Bill and the crew are gonna be over there at the Halloween Trunk or Treat festivities on the Rupert Square Halloween evening from six thirty PM to nine PM, and they want you to come on over, bring the kids, have a good time, a good safe time, and prizes are gonna be given to the best decorated car and top-three vendor costumes, and we salute Ark Animal Hospital for being a part of it. And don't forget, they are the best in veterinary services with warm hearts for cold noses. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
Good morning, Zed. You see the, uh, Hillary's mentor, Saul Alinsky, and you see, there's three main rules that he came out with, and, uh, to polarize the people, you divide it, you know, within the Republican Party is a great divide, and of course, they even tried to divide Trump's campaign, and they divide the country into racial groups, economic groups, you know, and so forth. And they also demonize, of course, and Trump has been demonized by the, the national media to unexcess it, and you hear nothing about Hillary, she gets some pass on destroying emails, Benghazi, the whole thing. Well, a hundred years ago, the elitist that wanted world government way back then, and, and now are close to that accomplishment, um, took over the twenty-five editorial boards of newspapers, of course, we didn't have radio, TV, and you look at those papers today, New York Times, Washington Post, and so forth, and you see, this has been going on for a long time, but the, uh, there's a movie that came to, um, Burley called Hillary's America, The Secret of the Democratic Party. There's a DVD out, and I would recommend people get that, uh, by Denise DeSousa, because he was put in jail for, uh, months and, um, for just cam, giving too much money to a candidate.
Yeah.
Unbelievable. So Obama went after him, but he says, and he warns, "We are on the brink of losing our country forever." After eight years of Obama, four, possibly eight years of Hillary as President of the United States, would so utterly transform America as to make it unrecognizable.
Absolutely.
No more will America be a land of opportunity.
Well, we've, uh, we've almost...
The, the thing, Zed, is that socialism never works, it never has worked, and it always leads to, uh, a plantation-type situation, where there's a few run, and the, the rest are basically slaves.
I agree with that.
...of the United Nations, and, uh, we, there's a bill, twelve oh five, HR twelve oh five, to get out of the UN. That's where we get all the refugee programs, Common Core, gun control, it's all coming through, right down from the communist, pro-communist, anti-American UN. And it's, it's really sad, but folks, we better be getting out the vote for Trump and get on the emails to your friends in other states. And, uh, it's Evan McNolan.
Wait, whoa, 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 Adrian, 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 wait a minute, I, I gotta shut you off there because, uh, I've got a weather forecast, I, I think you made some excellent points this morning, like you always do, and I agree with you, the United Nations is a very insidious factor into what's going on all across our United States. I gotta do a weather, but I do appreciate your call, thank you very much, very much.
Everybody's, it's Evan McNolan that's been making a big, in Utah, and here in Idaho also, the guy is a CFR member, Council on Foreign Relations, the elitist group, he's for the Trans-Pacific Partnership, which would, again, destroy our independence, so I wanna make that one point really clear, because a lot, a lot of people are being sucked into his campaign, he's a phony conservative.
I agree with you. I, I agree with you, I really do, and we're gonna do a little, uh, uh, exposé on that man. Thank you very much. And calls are welcome, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. Hey, real quick, tomorrow at nine fifteen, we're gonna have our Denny's Football Trivia Question, you might win a grand slam breakfast from Denny's, that's right, an original grand slam breakfast from Denny's Restaurant, America's diner. Remember to listen for that question at nine twelve tomorrow morning. Right now, it's time for the weather brought to you by the Urgent Cares. Hello, Kyle James and his wonderful professional staffs. They have the best of people at Riverview Urgent Care in Burley, Twin Falls Urgent Care in Twin, and Jerome Urgent Care in Jerome. Don't forget, flu shots, twenty dollars, and keep you healthy this winter. I've gotta get mine, yes, I do, you get in there and check it out at the Urgent Cares, minor emergencies, major care. Here now is Gina with the weather.
Well, we hit midweek stride, and weather for the rest of the week actually looks really nice. Partly cloudy skies is what we're expecting for today, high of fifty-three, tonight low of thirty-one. Tomorrow, partly cloudy and sixty, with an overnight low of thirty-four. Sixty-five under sunny skies for Friday and for the weekend, looks like mostly sunny skies, highs are gonna be in the mid-sixties. Yesterday's high was forty-sixty, overnight low was thirty-four. That is your weather for Zed and the Land.
Uh, Gina, thank you. Good weather forecast, as always, she puts a lot of heart and soul into it, and thank you very much. And don't forget, brought to you by the Urgent Cares. Go to urgentcareofidaho.com, check 'em out on the website, Riverview Urgent Care in Burley, Twin Falls Urgent Care in Twin Falls, and Jerome Urgent Care in Jerome, minor emergencies, major care. All right, it's your turn, calls welcome, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. As we draw closer to the election, I'm gonna be very blunt about things that are going on in the senatorial and congressional races, and I'm gonna start this morning with kind of an overriding statement, and we're gonna be more specific in the future. There are big decisions in this fall election, and the Democrats are making a push for some important seats that quite frankly, they are not qualified for. In the Twin Falls County Commissioner race, Jack Johnson in, uh, this District Three, I believe it is, yes, is running against Jill Schim. No way is Jill qualified to be a county commissioner. We need somebody that's gonna get out and really work for the city and the rural areas, and that, I believe, will be Jack Johnson. Uh, he knows both sides of the issues. Lee Hyder is running against Deborah Silver. You know my personal opinion of Deborah Silver, and I've been very blunt about it, I tried to get Deborah Silver, when she was the head of the Democratic Party, on my program so we could discuss the issues. She hung up the phone on me. I do not want her as a politico that is going to be representing basically me, my family, et cetera, if she's gonna have the rudeness not to address the issues on my program. We did it in a very polite fashion, and she hung up. And so therefore, Lee Hyder absolutely a shoe-in. Steve Harkins versus Catherine Talkington, uh, Steve has a gruff exterior, but he votes and is very sincerely believing in the betterment of our state. Catherine Talkington, I absolutely think that she's got the Democratic attitude of just throw money at it, and it will heal itself. Not gonna work that way. Senator Jim Patrick versus Scott McClure, that should be a no contest, a no-brainer. Jim Patrick is very sincere and absolutely has done a great job as a senator representing this area, and of course, Scott McClure, a former Republican that couldn't win, and then he switched parties and went Democrat, and he's still whining. And so I think that, uh, Senator Jim Patrick is absolutely the best choice to retain in office. That's a little bit, I'm gonna give you more in the future, and I'm not gonna pull any punches either. Calls are welcome, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. Oh, they're gonna cuss me. Ramsey Heating and Electric, offering rebates on qualified Lennox Home Comfort Systems, whether it's a gas furnace and air conditioner or a heat pump, you and your family will enjoy the comfort. Don't forget, Lennox and Ramsey have been teamed up for over fifty years, they know the climate, they know the equipment, and they've done the shopping for you. Six seven eight zero four five nine, Ramsey Heating and Electric and Lennox. Caller, good morning, you're on the air. Now, see, give me a break, you just called, wheels, what happened? Where did they go?
I'm not sure where they went. I put 'em through, and it was a solid connection, but it just went to the tone.
Oh my goodness, they're...
I'm hoping they call back in.
They're somewhere out there, wheels, find them! Okay, thank you. Calls welcome, maybe it was a Democrat that had the urge, all of a sudden, to show some courage. And then at the last minute, nope, they hung up. Okay, calls are welcome, four three six two two four four one eight six six nine two seven four five eight seven. Oh, boy, I'm telling all of my senior friends, you just got a raise of about four dollars on your social security. Actually, it came out to three dollars and ninety-two cents. I urge you, I beg you, don't spend it all in one place. Good morning, caller, you're on the air.
Good morning, sir.
Yes, how are you?
I am doing pretty good.
Okay.
You got a beautiful morning.
It is.
It is. Anyway, I got part of that phone number earlier, but I didn't get it all, I had the customer here and...
I'll give it to you again, have you pen in hand?
I do, sir, I'm leaving a writing.
All right, he is Superintendent Mark Bedell, B-E-D-E-L-L, of the Kansas City School Board, and the number is eight one six four one eight seven six one six.
Okay.
You know what I would appreciate, and, um, I, I'm gonna have a hard time trying to figure out where to fit it in, eh, with all the people coming up in the next couple of hours, but if you could call, and even if you don't get on the air this morning, let me know the verbiage that is said to you, in case it's something really important, I'll try to work it in, if not, we'll talk about it tomorrow morning.
I, you got it, sir.
All right, buddy. Thank you very much.
You bet. About that, uh, old DNC bus dumping their, their waste.
Did you hear that?
I did. I, I even went to, uh, there's a YouTube deal to throw, come up with a, uh, video of the news group.
Oh, no.
The news station out there was covering it.
Oh, no.
They had the fire department out there cleaning up this mess.
Oh.
Paper, all stuff, all over the street, and they said it was an honest mistake.
Wait a minute, whoa, stop a minute. It was an honest mistake for a Hillary bus to stop by a storm drain and let down the hose and let their septic tank run in the storm drain? What?
That is what the bus driver told the, the sheriff or the police department, they're investigating it.
(laughing)
I'm sure our tax dollars will pay the fine.
Oh my gosh.
Yeah. But, think of the irony of it, if she gets in, that's not gonna be the last time when she dumps on America.
You know, I'm really glad you were hesitant there, because I wasn't quite sure how you were gonna phrase that, and I was starting to break out in a cold sweat.
Well, I, I do have a little bit of my mother in me.
Uh, I know you do, and, and she has got me on occasion, and thinking now to today with her son, I, yeah, I was scared, I was scared.
Oh, shoot, but, I mean, you just, you can't make this stuff up.
You can't, but yet, you know what, it's so low-class or no-class, but it seems like the Democrats, they can do anything like even dumping on us.
Yeah, and I wanna, uh, make a little statement for people to ponder and think about.
Okay.
What were you finding out with these undercover videos, what the Democratic Party's been doing with these satellite companies, that they do have checks now from the Hillary campaign to these people? What they're doing behind the scenes? And you think that's bad, when she gets to be President of the United States, nobody is gonna be safe.
Yeah, real quick, answer this, Doug, real fast, but did you hear some of the excerpts from some of the tapes that they were caught on a live mic, especially the one guy that said, "Hey, man, I don't care about rules and regulations, we gotta win this blank election at any cost."
I've watched the complete tapes, both of them, part one and part two, and it scares me.
Yeah.
And Billy Graham said it right the other day, he says, "If Hillary gets in, Christians will be in death camps."
I hope that doesn't come to fruition by any sort, but thank you for your call, Doug, I gotta run, thanks, buddy.
Bet.
All right. Hey, don't forget our major sponsor, your Magic Valley Leshwab Tire Centers, they are having right now for you a great big, huge fall tire sale. Absolutely, they've got all the passenger car SUV tires and pickup tires, a lot of them on sale, like the Eclipse for your cars, all-season design, seventy thousand mile warranty, woo-hoo, check that one out today. And don't forget, they got the best tire value promise in the industry, whatever the road throws at you, from potholes to nails, any road hazard, their free guarantee protects ya. Absolutely, and don't forget, they got the best in brake service, the best in front-end alignment, shocks and struts, and batteries, I can attest to that. They will and can help you. Stop in and see Lane in Rupert, Dave on Blue Lakes in Twin, Mike in Buell, Mike and Jerome, the Twist Family in Paul, Daniel on Pole Line in Twin Falls, and Randy on Overland in Burley, the best, your Magic Valley Leshwab Tire Centers. Now, don't forget, don't forget, next hour, nine oh six, Dave Beagle, then, at nine thirty this morning, famous, very famous conservative author, David Horowitz, gonna be very interesting, I'll be back in about six minutes, this word for Senator Mike Cr... This word for Senator Mike Crapo, and then Wheels taking us up to CBS News. Oh, good morning, good morning, beautiful blue sky outside Zeb's Ranch. Good morning to you, brought to you by our major sponsor, your Magic Valley Leshwab Tire Centers, all seven locations, serving you with a big fall tire sale. And don't forget too, some of our great advertisers, like Western Way Services.
From the canyons of the Snake River, and all across southern Idaho, we're always at your disposal. Western Way Services, we care about our community, our resources, and this green land. Western Way Services is landing ahead, all the way back to your disposal. Western Way Services.
Oh, they are always at your disposal. I'm telling you, folks, they are so great, so efficient, and get on the route service, and once we come by and get your garbage, it's gone, it's out of there. All you have to do is call them at seven three four six nine six nine. Western Way Services, always at your disposal, you call them today. Don't forget our friends at Ramsey Heating and Electric, offering rebates on qualified Lennox Home Comfort Systems. Remember the number to call, six seven eight zero four five nine, and remember how Ramsey Heating and Electric and Lennox can save you money. Want to also remind you too, that Lee Hyder is running for reelection for State Senators' District Twenty-Four. The best always stand the test, and that's exactly where we put Idaho Senator Lee Hyder as one of the best. Vote November eighth for a man that's devoted to Idaho and serving you. He's been very, very busy, helping to pass several bills at the Idaho Capitol. Senator Lee Hyder running for reelection for District Twenty-Four Senate, paid for by Lee Hyder for Senate District Twenty-Four. And in just a moment, we're gonna have our dear friend, my, he's been on every week, and I just enjoy visiting with him. Dave Beagle will be coming up in a moment. By the way too, Senator Jim Patrick is running for Republican reelection, District Twenty-Five Senate seat. This is a man that is absolutely involved with his community. He has served on the agricultural, education, and business committees, and also on the J.F.A.T. Committee. He knows how to keep helping and serving Idaho. Remember, November eighth, go to the polls and reelect Jim Patrick, Republican for District Twenty-Five Senate seat, paid for by reelect Patrick for Senator Treasurer Jim Patrick. And don't forget too, November eighth, vote yes on HJR Five. Your voice needs to be heard, and you should always be able to hold our state government accountable. Vote yes on HJR Five. And don't let activist courts take away our legislators' authority to approve or reject agency rules. Vote yes on HJR Five. Paid for by Speaker of the House Scott Bettke, Representative Fred Wood, and Senator Kelly Anthon. Woo, good morning, back in Indianapolis, Indiana, my dear, dear friend, Dave Beagle. Good morning, sir.
Yeah, good morning, Zeb. How you doing out there?
Uh, running in circles, and I just met myself, shook hands, and continued running.
No, you're faster than I thought you were.
Oh, don't let it kid you. Anyway, I gotta ask you, here we are, I have stated over the last couple of days that this debate, with the so-called polling saying that Hillary's ahead forty-five to thirty-nine, this debate tonight will be Trump's last stand, his Alamo, if you will. He can win it, lose it, all on attitude and being on the attack. What are your thoughts?
Well, there's no doubt, Zeb. I, you know, we've talked about this a lot, that, you know, how he appeals to the American people up there, his body language and how he comes across, um, means a lot, and if he's, you know, again, I know he needs to be on the attack, on the offensive, but he's gotta do it professional. If he doesn't, uh, I think he's done.
You know, and add to that, Dave, a little bit, uh, I've said what I think Trump needs to do, and how he needs to act in a professional manner, but I'd like to stack up my thoughts against yours. What really does Trump have to do? What's the body language? What's the verbiage? I mean, really, what does he have to do to transition the thought of a lot of people that maybe had their minds met up, or even influence the independents?
Well, I think it's body language, number one. He has to be professional, he has to stand up straight, he's gotta quit stalking, um, you know, walking around, and, uh, he needs to have a smile instead of a scowl, and, uh, I think those things are important. And, um, I think he needs to focus on what his agenda is to, uh, turn this country around, and what he can do for people, and the economy, and jobs, and things like that, and, uh, stay away from this, um, the attack mode that he wants to do on the personal things with Hillary. Um, I, I, I do agree with him, I do think there's voter fraud going on that there, and I do believe that, um, um, they're doing things behind the scenes, and she's been guilty of a lot of things, um, and, um, but I think he needs to appeal to the American people on what he's doing for them. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. Uh, I don't think he's really been explanatory enough on looking at the camera, this is my thought, and I'd like to get your opinion on what I say. Looking at the camera and talking to Mr. and Mrs. American and saying, "Here's how I, Donald Trump, can help you, here's what's wrong, here's what I can do to fix it, please give me your vote." Has he done that really?
No, he really hasn't, and, um, you know, and that's what he needs to do, and, um, you know, he's got a short time left now, but he still needs the ground game, 'cause I just, um, as I've told you, the unions are gonna be after him, and I just was reading an article, um, yesterday, that the unions have put in more money to defeat Trump than they have in the last two presidential elections.
Wow.
And I have to tell you, that's huge, because, and, uh, and that doesn't include the SEIU, the union I beat, 'cause they didn't have their numbers in there, and, um, they alone had donated like sixteen million to get Obama elected in two thousand and eight, um, so they are really gonna be out there, uh, talking to people, getting them to, to vote, getting them signed up, and then, you know, basically intimidating on them and who to vote for.
You know, Dave, I, I've heard a tape, it was on, it started this morning at about four AM, about some of the people connected with Hillary's campaign, and I'm just gonna give you a paraphrase of the general thought of the people. Uh, they've been quoted on tape as saying, "We have to win this thing regarding the election, regardless of any rules or regulations." It sounds to me like, uh, sometime, they have a feeling like they're backed into a corner, and yet they will go to any means, they, the Democrats and Hillary's campaign, to any means to win this election. It's kinda spooky, isn't it?
Well, no, Zeb, it is, Zeb, and it's, it's what I've talked about all along, and what I believe, um, uh, and let me put it in simple terms. You know, the SEIU wanted to force unionize my people by taking away the election process and going to card check, where they, you know, forced them to sign union cards. Um, and the majority of the Democratic Party, and Evan By, who's running for Senator again here in Indiana, uh, stood behind this, uh, full force. So, if they're willing to force unionize people and make people belong to the union, aren't they willing to do the same thing in the national election, to force people to vote who they wanna vote, who they want them to vote for?
Absolutely. Uh, let me ask you a little bit, uh, over the last couple of weeks, Dave, even prior to last week's program, we heard about what happened in North Carolina with a firebomb, and then we've heard about other Republican headquarters, Phoenix, Arizona, and now one in Indiana, right in your backyard, Republican headquarters that have been sabotaged. What's going on here?
Well, it's intimidation tactics, Zeb, that's all it is. Um, they're going after people, and, uh, they're trying to, uh, divide and conquer, and, uh, get people saying, you know, we're just not, we're, excuse me, we're done, we're not gonna vote, uh, and if you do vote, you better, you better not vote for, uh, Trump. And, uh, these are all the same tactics that I'm used to seeing and what they do. And, uh, unfortunately, the Republican Party doesn't get it, they haven't coalesced and come together, and stood up and had a backbone.
I wanna talk to you about that a little bit more, right after this message. I've got ninety seconds, I'll be right back with my dear friend, Dave Beagle. Don't forget, Hanson Mortuary at seven ten Sixth Street in Rupert, with our dear friend Joel Heward, his staff, his family, all serving you and your family when there's the passing of a loved one, and they can travel to the rural towns and churches and serve you, always with the highest ethical standards, with unquestioned integrity. Please write the number down and call them, four three six five six three six. Hanson Mortuary, seven ten Sixth Street in Rupert, serving you and your family. Want to remind you too, about our dear friends that are running for office, and I'd like to mention again, that Scott Bettke, State Representative and Speaker of the House, District Twenty-Seven, Position A, let me try that again, District Twenty-Seven, Position A. Speaker of the House Scott Bettke urges you to vote in this election November eighth, and he wants you to vote yes on HJR Five. Be sure to bring your picture ID when you come to vote, and don't forget, Scott Bettke, Speaker of the House and State Representative, District Twenty-Seven, Position A, and paid for by Representative Scott Bettke of Oakley, District Seven. And last but not least, before we send it back over to Dave Beagle, Rick Martin is running for CSI trustee zone two, and don't forget to vote for Rick Martin on November eighth. And voters from Jerome and Twin Falls Counties will have a conservative voice for the CSI Board of Trustees. He's a graduate of the United States Air Force Police Academy, and he wants to work for you and this community. Please vote for Rick Martin, CSI trustee zone two, paid for by Rick Martin, for CSI trustee, Rick Martin Treasurer. Woo, Dave, we're back. Um, let me ask you a little bit about the Republican Party. I have been, I grew up in a Republican family, and always, yes, I'm very prejudiced, have voted towards and leaned towards most all, ninety-nine percent of the Republican nominees and the incumbents, et cetera. But right now, I, I look at the party, and it's fractured, it looks like it's scared, it looks like it's a Halloween skeleton hanging on the wall, uh, it's scaring people, if you will, because they're, right now, don't seem like they even have a party. What's going on here?
Well, Zeb, it's, uh, it really comes down back to basics, um, the Republican Party, um, and on both sides of the aisles, uh, people want the Washington lifestyle, they wanna stay in politics, and, uh, they don't wanna get on board with somebody they think's gonna cost them votes in this election, and, uh, that's why you see some senators and people in the House, uh, shying away from Trump, and we've got a divisive group, and instead of them stepping back and realizing, this isn't about them, this is about this country, and they're in Washington to do the right thing for this country, and they need to step up, have some backbone, and take their lumps, and move ahead, and, uh, you know, get Trump elected and move this country ahead.
What about Paul Ryan? What about Mitch McConnell? If you had an audience with them today, a little lunch, what would you tell both of them that they'd better start to try to do in the remaining twenty days before the election?
Well, you know, I've met both, both of them at times, and I've tried to tell them in the past that, uh, you know, you have to, uh, quit worrying about your own, uh, agenda, uh, you gotta worry about this country, and you need to step up, you need to go out and embrace Trump, and, uh, get the rest of the people in the Senate and the House to embrace him and come together, uh, 'cause you guys are the leaders, and, uh, you need to do it with style and class, and, um, you need to, um, uh, help Trump show that Hillary is not fit to be President of this country, and, uh, if you do that, what you'll find is, is that you'll get the votes you need, and, uh, not only will we have a Republican President, we'll keep the House and Senate.
What does it say to you as a businessman and a leader in the community, forty-five percent of America is leaning towards Hillary Clinton and only thirty-nine towards Trump, and then a couple of the votes going either way for the third and fourth party nominees? What does it tell you about American thought right now with forty-five percent for Hillary Clinton?
Well, first of all, Zeb, I, I don't put a lot of stock in the polls, 'cause, um, you don't know where they're taking them, um, who they're, who they're calling, uh, what their agenda is, what their questions are, um, you know, how they're, how they're formulating the questions, and, um, you know, what areas they're calling, um, it makes a big difference how you, how you do all that stuff, and, uh, I, I think this is what Trump and the rest of Americans need to understand, and, uh, you know, the Republican Party and Trump have to go out in the last twenty days here, they really have to get in front of the American people and appeal to them. I really think so.
I gotta ask you this question, because it hasn't come to fruition yet, but he has made intimations that maybe he will run, and its former great pitcher, Curt Schilling, with the Red Sox, et cetera, may be going to throw his hat in the ring in the future against Elizabeth Warren in Massachusetts. What do you think about that race?
Yeah, that could be interesting. You know, I'd, I'd have to get a little more background on that one to, uh, to see, but, um, you know, it's, it's good that the other people are willing to step up.
It is. Now, I wanna ask you something else that's not...
On your previous question, the other thing is, is the news media is skewing all this stuff so much, and, uh, you know, they're blasting Trump and leaving Hillary alone.
Yeah.
And this is all part of the program, and, um, uh, there was a, um, I don't know if you saw it, but there was a video that came out in one of the tapes, that, um, what they're actually saying is, um, there is a lot of, Democrats are admitting there's a lot of voter fraud going on, and, uh, the news media won't report it, and, uh, won't report or go after the Republican Party, 'cause they're being intimidated behind the scenes. Zeb, these are things I've talked about before.
You know, you, of all people, with what happened with the SEIU unions, you know about intimidation, you know about, uh, the fraudulent attitude, uh, it's really kind of, well, it's, it's lessening and it's depressing to think that our American political scheme, and also our government, is down in the gutter with this kind of a problem.
Well, it really is, but, um, you think about it, Zeb, this goes back, uh, into the thirties and that, uh, when you had the mafia, and, 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 and big labor kinda grew out of that, and the same type of tactics, and, uh, you know, and, uh, we won World War Two and that, and the Korean War, um, and, you know, the communist nations have said they're gonna get us from behind the scenes, um, they're gonna, uh, take over this country from within, internally, and that's what they're doing by getting people to do these things and buying into this stuff and these type of tactics and lies and misinformation. It's time for America to wake up.
When you say it's time for America to wake up, I've gotta also go into a topic regarding the Department of Justice, Loretta Lynch, and possibly some arm twisting to the FBI. I know you followed this story. What are your thoughts as Joe Common citizen, looking at this mess and saying, "Holy cow, is nothing sacred"?
I, I, I believe from the very beginning that this administration has controlled the departments and what they do and what they say, and again, behind the scenes, it's intimidation tactics. They go to these people and say, "You better do this or else," and, um, uh, you know, and it's a shame, Zeb, too many people won't stand up.
Yeah.
Uh, they don't wanna lose their jobs and that, and, you know, I could've done the same thing against the SEIU, but my position was, no, we're gonna do what's right.
Yep.
And, um, you know, we don't have enough people out there anymore that do that.
Absolutely. I've only got a couple of minutes left, and I wanted you to have plenty of time to gloat at me, because I'm having a problem. My Chicago Cubs are down two games to one to the Dodgers. There's trouble in River City, and the trombone player can't hit a note. What's going on here?
Uh, I don't know, Zeb, I'm, I'm, I'm cheering for you, I'm, I'm hoping that the Cubs don't have their, you know, traditional failure and, uh, you know, sink, um, I'm hoping they come back, um, but look at our football teams too, look at your Packers and, and my Colts. I mean, you know, the Colts were ahead with, by what, fourteen points with four minutes to go, and tie them up and beat them in overtime.
Yeah. I, I just, don't even mention Green Bay to me, because the way they're playing, and with the first time in a long time at Lambeau Field, the booing to the, uh, people like Aaron Rodgers, et cetera, I'm gonna go in a corner and pout for about a half a day. Leave me alone.
Well, I understand, there's, I saw another article on Aaron Rodgers, that they say he's not the same Aaron Rodgers as he used to be, and, uh, that's, that's interesting.
Well, I'll tell you what, Dave, I really appreciate, uh, your coming on the program this morning, I know we've had to abbreviate some things. Quickly, a final thought, how much, honestly, do you think Trump, if he handles himself correctly, tonight at that debate, how much can he gain of the American public's vote?
Well, I think he can do pretty well, Zeb, and, uh, I mean, it's gonna be tough. But here's the other side, um, on the, on the union issue, and even in this article that I was reading, where they've, uh, spent, uh, the unions have spent more money on this election than the past two, um, uh, Trump, you know, from AFL-CIO, admitted that a lot of the union members out there, uh, behind the scenes are supporting Trump.
Yeah.
And, uh, that's why they've gotta go out and, uh, you know, spend this money and, and convert people, so what they're actually gonna do is they're gonna intimidate their own members. But, um, I still think that if, uh, Trump comes out, presents himself the right way, and we have jobs for you people, and we're gonna help you, we're gonna, uh, bring back jobs and the economy in this country, and that, I still think he can get a big, uh, share of the union membership. membership vote, which is critical.
Absolutely. My dear friend Dave Bego in Indianapolis, Indiana, God's blessings to you. Have a great week, and I'll look forward to our conversation next Wednesday. Dave, God bless you, man. Thanks so much.
Same with you, and have a good week.
All right, sir. Thank you very, very much. I have a lot of respect for that gentleman, Dave Bego in Indianapolis, and look forward to our chats on Wednesday. By the way, don't forget Roggi Auctions. Oh my goodness sakes, Ron Roggi, Cade Roggi, Jed South, the whole crew, they're going to have a ripping good sale coming up in just a matter of a couple of days. CD Ranch's sale, yep, at 259 South Meridian Road in Rupert. Oh my goodness, the best of farm equipment, livestock equipment, horse and tack equipment, guns, vehicles, collectibles, excess horse trailers, sheepcabs. Oh, you'd better attend this sale, it's going to be a good one. CD Ranch's sale coming up on October 22nd, and that's just a matter of a couple of days from right now, so you plan to attend Roggi Auctions and the CD Ranch's sale, October 22nd, sale time at 11:00 AM. Also want to remind you about our friends at Lee's Furniture Floors and More. Oh my goodness, they're continuing, yeah, they're making it go a lot longer, the Columbus Day Sale. No money down, no interest, twelve months on approved credit, you can get a king-sized mattress for the price of a queen, you can get a queen-sized mattress for the price of a foal, and a good night's sleep. Stop in and see them today at Lee's Furniture Floors and More. All the recliners, all the dining room sets, everything at Lee's Furniture Floors and More. Absolutely, at 459 Overland in Burley. Really, really good folks. We are condensing a little bit of our advertisements right now, and the reason why I've got David Horowitz scheduled to come on the program in just a few minutes, and I want to have his interview without any breaks. So we're going to have this good word, and then hopefully get him on the air in just a few moments. Don't forget Cameron Siemens Insurance, Highway 24 in Rupert. When you think about life insurance, health insurance, retirement planning, and employee benefits, all of that, all of that with the professionals. Cameron and Siemens Insurance, Highway 24 in Rupert, number to call, 436-4424. And I mean that. Call them today, make an appointment, they can and they will help you. Cameron and Siemens Insurance in Rupert. And I also know some other good folks over in that neck of the woods that they can sell a lot of fun. What am I talking about? Let's Ride, 270 Highway 24 between Rupert and the world. They're open Monday through Friday, nine to six, Saturday's nine to five. And, yeah, that's right, they said the snow was coming, and they've got brand-new snowmobiles over at Let's Ride, along with the new Maverick X3 side-by-side. Oh, boy, you can get out and really enjoy the outdoors of southern Idaho, along with all the accessories, and of course, don't forget a great service department. Let's Ride, 270 Highway 24 between Rupert and the world, and it's true, this is where the fun is sold. You stop over and see those good folks today. Yes, young man, my engineer Wheels, what have you got for us?
I was just going to let you know, I got ahold of Mr. Horowitz. He is on the freeway at the moment, so if you're okay with that, I'm going to give him another call back in a couple minutes, so in that way, he's able to pull over, and he'll be able to talk to you.
All right. Let me know as soon as you can get ahold of him, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. That'll give us an opportunity to kind of slow down a little bit, catch our breath, and get rid of this cough. I can't wait for hay fever season to be over. And remind you about the Senior Junction Pumpkin Function. Frightfully wonderful. It's coming up on October 27th, next week, and we're going to do a remote broadcast over there from eight to eleven, but we're going to be there earlier at seven o'clock in the morning for a really good, ghoulishly delicious breakfast. From seven to ten, it's only five bucks, and you can eat right there in the witch's den. Oh my goodness, they're going to be selling creep candy for Halloween, T-shirts to celebrate the Senior Junction Pumpkin Function for only fifteen dollars, costume contests, lots of good prizes. Please be in attendance, and all the net proceeds go to the Meals on Wheels. Don't forget that, please. Want to also say this morning, holy cow, we're going through our ads here like water down a drain. I want to remind you about my dear friend Clark Kaufman, your District 25B representative, encouraging you to support and vote yes on HJR5, which is an amendment to the Idaho Constitution to ensure the separation of powers of the executive and the legislative branches. Vote yes on HJR5, November 8th. And don't forget this ad paid for by the committee to elect Clark Kaufman, Debbie Kaufman Treasurer. Thank you very much, Clark, I appreciate that. Also, I want to remind everybody about our dear friend, and that's of course Representative Fred Wood. Thank you, Fred. Running unopposed for the State Representative, District 27. Fred is on the Health and Welfare Committee and on the Resources and Environment Committee, and a past member of the Fish and Game Commission. And believe me, he wants you also to vote yes on HJR5. Take your picture ID to the polls with you, and don't forget, thanks to Fred Wood, running unopposed for State Representative, District 27, paid for by Fred Wood, House Seat 27. Let's check with our dear friend Wheels and see if we have Mr. Horowitz already and lined up.
I am going to be getting him on the phone right now.
All right. Let me know if you would, please. Want to remind you that coming up a little bit later on, your Idaho Fish and Game Report with Kelton Hatch at 10:06, and a lot of other items, and we want to say thank you again to all of our political people that have taken the time and the effort to be a part of our program from now until Election Day. We certainly do appreciate it. I am blessed to have an author that I've read most of his books, and I especially like The Take No Prisoners, The Battle Plan for Defeating the Left. His conservative attitude and the way he writes his books, very interesting, and commands your attention for the problems that are going on here in our United States. He has a brand-new book out called The Black Book of the American Left, Volume Three, The Left in Power, Clinton to Obama. And I'd like to at this time introduce a great author, David Horowitz. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Very pleasurable on my part to have you take the time to come on our program, and I'm going to let you, if you would, please, explain a little bit about your new book, The Black Book of the American Left. Give us a little basis as to your thoughts on why you wanted to write this book.
Well-
I have lost it. Yes, I'm waiting, sir. Go ahead, please.
Yeah. The reason for writing it is that until, actually, until the Trump campaign, Republicans have not realized or not recognized or not understood how malignant the Democratic Party has become. The Democratic Party used to be represented by John F. Kennedy, who was a liberal icon once. Kennedy was a militant anti-communist, which would mean that today he would be a militant anti-radical Islamic terrorist, words that neither, no Democrat wants to say. He was a hawk on defense, and the largest military buildup in peacetime history. He was for a capital gains tax cut and a balanced budget. If he were alive today, he would be called by Democrats an arch-right-wing conservative Republican. That's how far left the Democratic Party has moved, and this book I've written, The Left in Power, Clinton to Obama, explains how it happened. You can trace it from the Clinton administration through the Obama White House. In Obama, we have someone, Barack Obama comes from the same background I did, he was raised by Communists. The difference between us is that I left, I left, and he never did. And he has sabotaged America, he's taken us down, he's accumulated more debt than all the Presidents since George Washington put together. He's degraded our military dramatically, he's given up past the nuclear weapons and a hundred and eighty billion dollars to Iran, whose leaders chant death to America. I mean, you know what's happened, and with Hillary's collusion. So that's why I think this book is topical, and people will be interested in reading it.
Mr. Horowitz, let me ask you this. We have slipped so far down in our respect for ourselves in this country, and the American naivete of accepting less instead of always looking for more. Can we regain in this country the pride that this nation stood for at one time?
That's what you call a sixty-four thousand dollar question. Um, you know, I, I don't have an answer to that. I think there's a lot of fight in America. It's true, the Democrats have run us down, and reckless Republicans have gone along with it. But, you know, the Trump campaign gives me hope. I mean, look at the enthusiasm for Donald Trump, despite the unbelievably nasty malicious devious attacks on him. This is character assassination, you know, on an Olympic scale, what's going on, and it's the media that's the, you know, the chief weapons of the Democratic Party, is provided by a media which has given up all of its journalistic principles.
Yes.
The media used to be skeptical. You didn't have a woman coming forward thirty years after the fact and making claims that cannot be substantiated and put it on the front pages. But that's what the New York Times has done, and media all across the country. And yet, you know, the Trump supporters have held fast, and they want to make this country great again. And, you know, I believe that eventually there's going to be such an atrocity committed against us because of our open borders and irrational refugee resettlement projects, that the nation will come back and stand up for itself.
Let me ask you this, sir. I know in your book you devote some time and effort to talking about politically correct or political correctness on an incorrect scale. We right now, PC has taken over our lifestyles, and we can't say this, we can't do that. They have free speech zones on college campuses. The professors-
This party line, political correctness is too polite. This is a party line of the left, and what they want to do, what they say, they want to make universities safe for Communist ideas. That's the basic idea, that Republicans concerned as anybody who deviates or dissents from the leftist party line becomes an unperson, somebody whose character you assassinate. And, you know, and Hillary, I think the wisest thing that Trump said in the debate was when he said that Hillary has tremendous hate in her heart, and he was referring to the deplorable, when she called Republicans deplorable and irredeemable. And then she specified what she meant. Racist, sexist, homophobic, Islamophobe, xenophobic. Now, there isn't a conservative listening to my voice here who's been in an argument with a so-called liberal or Democrat who hasn't been called a racist, or a sexist, or a homophobe. The Democratic Party is a party of hate. That's the fuel, that's what they run on. Every election campaign, they accuse Republicans of conducting a war on women, ludicrous attacks. But the Republican Party has generally sort of ducked when this happens, and garnered retreat and apologizing. It's only with Trump that Republicans are on the attack, and that's a good thing.
Absolutely. I would like you to give us a little bit of your thoughts on the refugees coming into America from the Middle East. Our area where I live, we are subjected to bringing in and taking in more. We're seeing it to be a real thrust on our economy, and we just don't have the money. What's going on with your thoughts?
It's a terrorist threat. Look, first of all, it's about ninety-five percent of the refugees are Muslims, not Christians. It's the Christians who are being slaughtered for not being Muslims. The second place is that the Pew Foundations, Al Jazeera, they've all done studies, surveys, you know, public opinion surveys in the Muslim world. And it's forty percent of Muslims support Osama bin Laden and the war, the holy war against us. So if you let in a hundred thousand Syrian refugees, you're likely to be letting in forty thousand sympathizers with the terrorists. And that's crucial. The San Bernardino killers, their community knew what they were doing, they had a bomb factory, the mother was in the house. You think she didn't talk to the father? They belonged to this radical mosque. The guy who set the bombs in New Jersey and New York, he blew up an IED in his backyard, nobody reported it. So sympathizers are crucial to the success of terrorist attacks. And letting in, I mean, people who are not going to be assimilated, what's happened in Europe is that you have these whole communities and neighborhoods where the police can't go. They're called no-go zones, and that's where the terrorists plot and carry out their attacks for them.
I know also in your book you talk about the hatred and contempt against our police in America. How can we overcome this if Hillary has a shot at the presidency?
Well, you have to start calling the Democrats what they are, which is racist. I mean, they happen to be anti-white racists, but they're racist on the left. Black Lives Matter is a racist movement overtly, and it's in bed with the terrorists, and with Hamas in the Middle East that sent delegations to join forces with them. And it's gotten a lot of heroic policemen killed, and it's gotten a much larger number of blacks killed because the police have backed off aggressive policing. And the Democratic Party officially endorses Black Lives Matter, and George Soros and the Ford Foundation have given this racist organization a hundred million dollars. So we have a serious problem in our cities. I, you know, the absurd aspect of this, I mean, the idea that America's a white supremacist nation, where we've had two terms of a black president, two black Attorney Generals, three black Secretaries of State, two black, I mean, I could go on and on, three National Security Council heads have been black. I mean, it's ridiculous, and there had twenty thousand black elected officials. When we look at the news, when those police get killed, the police chiefs come on television, and they're black. But why is the Democratic Party supporting them, and why aren't Republicans jumping all over them? They control, I mean, Trump is the first Republican to point out that they control every major inner city in America, all the failing schools. They're responsible for the high crime rates, because they, like Chicago, which is just a killing zone, has the toughest gun control laws in the country, so that's deprived war-biting citizens of defense, the criminals will get the guns. Then they let them off when they catch them, these predators, the ones that killed Dwayne Wade's cousin, they shouldn't even be on the street, but it was liberal judges that let them out. But Republicans are tongue-tied, they never mentioned this until Trump.
Absolutely. When people get your book, The Black Book of the American Left, and they read the book and close the cover, what's the final thought that you want them to take away from reading your book?
That the Democrats have hatred in their hearts, that you can't appease them, you have to go in their face and call them for what they are. What Republican would have called Hillary, crooked Hillary? She is a crook. She has, she's violated our espionage laws, she's a liar and a crook, but it's only Trump who's been willing to say that. So people should take from my book when they read the, you know, the last chapter is called Anti-White Racism, The Hate That Dare Not Speak Its Name. Nobody is talking about anti-white racism, and yet it's rampant in this country. Nobody is talking about the way which Obama, that Obama is a radical. The fact that he doesn't appear like one is because he went to school with Saul Alinsky, there's a whole chapter in my book called Rules for Revolution, and the first one is you don't let on what you're really about. Hillary used to open borders, so was the Democratic Party. You know, there's a lot of denial of that until we have the WikiLeaks leaks, but you don't need the WikiLeaks leaks to know that.
Absolutely.
You have to, these- You have to, these are malicious people. She is a malicious person. And that's what I want people to take away from this book I've written called The Left in Power.
Uh, Mr. Horowitz, whereabouts can they find the book? Is it at all major bookstores as of this morning?
It should be at, uh, all the Barnes and Nobles, but the, it definitely is at Amazon and, and you can get it at my, uh, website, frontpage magazine dot com. I also have a website called Black Book of the American Left with all my books and these.
Well, he's a great author and I've read many of his works and I can't wait to read this one. The Black Book of the American Left, Volume Three, The Left in Power, Clinton to Obama. Sir, I have a caller. If you could take one call and then I'll have to end the segment. Go ahead, caller, quickly for Mr. Horowitz, fast.
Yes, Mr. Horowitz, if she wins, I believe that there's more and more people that are so frustrated that they will actu- actually act. But if she wins, what is that going to tell? How is it going to be in America? I'll hang up.
Go ahead, sir, please.
Well, look, there's going to be a battle inside the Republican Party. There'll also probably be one inside the Democratic Party. The Bernie Sanders people are not happy with her corruption and, and, and are being in bed with Wall Street. Um, but it's the Republican side that interests me. There's going to be a battle for Republicans to finally stand up and oppose this. We had, you know, we have the greatest majority in, in a hundred years in the House and they did nothing to stop Obama. So there'll be a real battle of the Trump forces inside the Republican Party. And that's the first thing, people should get involved. It, it, our country is slipping away and, uh, it's getting more and more dangerous. So what's, what's required is for the grassroots, is for people to get active, get active in, in Republican Party politics and make sure that you're supporting people who are willing to fight. Trump is the only one who is actually fighting, going in the face of Hillary, calling her a crook to her face, saying that people, uh, who did a fifth of what she did are in jail, which is true.
Absolutely.
Why don't Republicans talk like this? Uh, so get out there, get involved. Your, your country is, is in danger.
Absolutely. Mr. David Horowitz, the author of The Black Book of the American Left, Volume Three. Sir, thank you so much for taking the time. God bless you and I certainly hope the book does well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, sir. Uh, very honored to have that man on my program this morning and it is called The Black Book of the American Left, Volume, uh, Three, I believe it is. I might be wrong, might be Volume Seven. The ink right here on my paper is not, uh, not clear on that. The Left in Power, Clinton to Obama. This man has written so many books and I've had the occasion to read them. Unholy Alliance, The Party of Defeat, Take No Prisoners, The Battle Plan for Defeating the Left, that's my favorite, and also Art of Political War. And he's been praised by many, many people, including, uh, many people like Karl Rove, et cetera, that really adhere to and espouse what David Horowitz says. And we're honored to have him on the program. Thank you very much. Uh, calls are welcome and appreciated, four-three-six-two-two-four-four-one-eight-six-six-nine-two-seven-four-five-eight-seven. We're going to get a weather forecast in here and then we'll take some more of your calls. So please give me a jingle. I want to remind you, the weather brought to you this hour by Pope Phillips, Oaks, Goodwin and Company CPAs, Curtis Pope, Todd Phillips, Rob Oaks, Mitch Goodwin, and Lydenkranke. Good, good people helping you with your tax return preparation, business consulting, bookkeeping services, financial statement preparation. They know and they've been serving the Minnichash area for well over fifty years. Two locations, seventeen-ten Overland in Burley and six-twenty Fifth Street in Rupert. Pope Phillips, Oaks, Goodwin and Company. And right now here's Gina with the weather.
Well, we hit midweek stride and weather for the rest of the week actually looks really nice. Partly cloudy skies is what we're expecting for today. High of fifty-three, tonight low of thirty-one. Tomorrow partly cloudy and sixty, with an overnight low of thirty-four. Sixty-five under sunny skies for Friday and for the weekend. Looks like mostly sunny skies. Highs are going to be in the mid-sixties. Yesterday's high was forty-sixty, overnight low was thirty-four. That is your weather for Zebbit the Ranch.
Uh, the end of the year is upon us and I know if you're like me, you got to put everything together and dot all the i's, cross all the t's for your taxes and go to the best and they can help you. Pope Phillips, Oaks, Goodwin and Company. And again, locations in Burley and Rupert. They've been serving the Minnichash area for well over fifty years. Like to have your calls. Give us a jingle, four-three-six-two-two-four-four-one-eight-six-six-nine-two-seven-four-five-eight-seven. You know, as you read through the excerpts of this book, and I really want to push that book for, uh, just a good reason because it lays it out in simple terminology about what's wrong with this country and where we're headed. Mr. Horowitz was very, very blunt about the problems with Hillary, about the problems with Democrats and the left leaning for this United States of America. And in the book he talks about, uh, the politically correct culture and most of us would say politically incorrect. And, uh, also talking about the refugees coming here to this country and how the leftists are playing the race card with the Saul Alinsky, Rules for Radicals, et cetera. Absolutely a must-read, so I certainly hope you get a copy of that book. I personally am going to go to the bookstore Friday morning and pick one up. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
Well, exactly.
Yes, sir.
You know, this, in the two-twelve election, uh, Romney did not get one single vote in Philadelphia in the general election. Do you know how valid that is or can that even be true?
Let's change the phrases that you just used. Instead of saying how valid it is, let's talk about how invalid it is.
Right, right. But is it really a fact or is it just something somebody decided to be ignorant?
You know, there were, there were a lot of talk and, uh, there was a lot of talk and a lot of, uh, different people with Fox News, et cetera, that were in, doing some investigatory type reporting on this, about how possibly that could be true at various precincts, not any votes whatsoever. And they brought up the, I remember during the last election, they were talking about how in the world could it possibly happen that way? And then those same precincts were under scrutiny for possibly voter fraud. So you draw your own lines, Keith, but I'm going to say this. Do I think there's voter fraud? Do I think there's intimidation? When you see somebody with the Black Panthers standing out in front of a polling place with the Billy Club, don't you take that as intimidation, my dear friend?
Absolutely. That's, that's so intimidating. I mean, uh, I don't care how strong you are, that, you know, the first thing you think of is your family. And these folks don't give any regard to the family. It's, we gotta win.
Yeah.
And it's, it's got to destroy everybody's lives, so be it.
I agree. Well, and it was even going further than that to what we heard on some of the tapes this morning, early. A couple of the Democratic, uh, headquarter leadership was saying, we have to win at any cost regardless, here's the key words, of any rules or regulations. That's more than scary, Keith.
Yeah, and you know, it's almost comical that the Democrats bombed this place in North Carolina and then the, uh, Democrats come rushing in and save the day.
Yeah.
Help out to get it back going again.
Amen, yeah.
Wonderful.
Look just like Joe Goodguy or the Lone Ranger. Keith, thank you for your call. God bless you, man. Thanks.
It sure is.
All right.
You know, the Lone Ranger was my hero at one time, you know? And I had his guns and all that kind of stuff.
Well, I did too.
But I didn't have them now.
Okay. Keith, thank you very much. I got to do a commercial quickly. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Don't forget the Columbus Day sale is continuing. Yeah, they're stretching it out over at Lee's Furniture, Floors and More at four-fifty-nine Overland in Burley. Yes, sir, no money down, no interest, twelve months on approved credit. Oh, 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 you can get a king mattress for a queen. You can get a queen-sized mattress for the price of a fall. You better stop in and get a good night's sleep. And they've got all the dining room sets and all the recliners. They've got a whole bunch of recliners over there, great selection at Lee's Furniture, Floors and More. Four-fifty-nine Overland in Burley, you stop in and see them today. I want to say thank you to Wheels over at our main station. He's doing a great job. Wheels, turn your mic on real quick. I know that sometimes it's hard to catch these people. Sometimes we have occurrences where they're on the road traveling or in an airport or on an airplane. You did a really good job and I want to say thank you for all your effort.
Well, you're, you're welcome. It kind of scared me a little bit because when, you know, we want to make sure that they're on, you know, right when they need to be. And, uh, it, it was good though that we took the extra few minutes.
All right. I appreciate you. He, he had to pull over on the interstate, you say, right?
Uh, yeah, he was on the interstate when he was talking to me and so I was just like, yeah, you should probably make sure to pull over just so in that way.
Drive carefully. We, we, we don't want any fender benders on the program, right?
Yep, there you go.
All right. Hey, listen, we've got a good word for Senator Mike Crapo coming up next and then you're going to take us up to CBS News, followed by, oh, oh, lookout, there's Kelton Hatch in the house for the fishing game report next hour. We'll see you back in about seven minutes. The Bulk is in the house. Your mic's not on. I left it off for a reason. The Bulk is-
I was just going to remind you, everybody else that, uh, remember to put in for their controlled hunt applications.
Yeah, I forgot.
Or out hunting.
Yeah, I forgot.
I know.
I knew you had to rub that in. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, welcome back to Zebbit the Ranch with our major sponsor, your Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers, all seven locations, serving you with the big fall tire sale going on right now. And of course, some of our great advertisers like Western Waste Services, always at your disposal. Call them at seven-three-four-six-nine-six-nine. Also want to remind you too about our friends at Ramsey Heating and Electric, offering rebates on qualified Lennox home comfort systems, whether it's a gas furnace, an air conditioner, or a heat pump. As I just about choked to death, you and your family will enjoy the comfort. Call them at six-seven-eight-zero-four-five-nine and find out how Ramsey Heating and Electric and Lennox can save you money. How are you?
Loving life.
Oh, Kelton Hatch, Idaho Fishing Game. Uh, I was warned after the last program, the, uh, people over in Jerome called me and they said you have to be much more respectful of Kelton and his position and roll out the red carpet with a band playing Hail to the President and so therefore, how you doing?
You know, it's hunting season. How much better can it be?
Oh, I tell you what, we went up on our four-wheelers, uh, over a week ago and we were way, way, way back in there and we just ran across a father and a daughter and she, the daughter, had just shot her first buck. And she was beaming like a Cheshire cat. Pretty proud, pretty proud.
It's fun. That's the fun part. I've been out a couple of times with my son so far and we're headed out again this weekend and, uh, you know, it's just that that's what makes hunting season fun, just getting out with family and-
Yeah. I talked to the dad for a few minutes and, and move that mic a little closer to you, can you Kelton?
I'm not used to being, having to sit up so straight and bend over.
Well, tip it up a little bit if it's-
I'm used to leaning back, you know, when that happens.
Well, I know you are, but, uh, we're trying to make you a better person. Anyway, uh, the dad, was he proud or what?
Oh, I'm sure.
Man, those are moments that you just can't replace.
No, no, and, yeah, it's just, it's a lot of fun. I've got, you know, you, you think back and it, it's interesting, my, uh, my daughter brought a friend home this last weekend and the first thing she did was go in the garage.
You say brought her friend home from?
College.
What college did she go to?
Utah State.
Really? She's also an alumni.
She's an Aggie.
Or going to be, I should say, an Aggie. Daddy was an Aggie.
Yep, and I've got two of them down there.
Oh, my goodness.
But no, the first thing she does is go into the garage and show them the different antlers from the bucks that she's harvested over the years.
Really?
Yeah, it's kind of fun because it's, you know, it's just, it's a good memory. It's, we had a lot of fun doing it and it's just, it's a good way.
What is she going to school for? What does she want to do?
One of those really good, good degrees, history.
History.
I don't know what she's going to do with it.
She's going to teach.
She is.
And you know what? God bless her, I hope she teaches history the way it's supposed to be.
You bet. And all, she loves, loves it and so I'm glad that she's, I, I teased her though before she went, I says, go get a degree that you can make some money if you're going to get a degree.
Yeah.
And so she gets a history.
Just like dad making five-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars a year.
Yeah. Five-dollar-and-fifty cents. Just below minimum wage.
You have no idea how refreshing it is to have a different segment on the program this morning with all the negativity and animosity that's going on. Well, maybe I overspoke. Maybe I oversold you.
Yeah, yeah. Wait, you haven't been looking at my, uh, my Facebook from Fishing Game.
Oh, no, it's good to have you on the show. What about the check station results? How is the harvest going?
You know, things looked really good. We, for a crappy weekend.
Crappy?
Well, this last weekend, I mean, it rained and snowed and, I mean, you know, for, I like it for hunting because it pushes all the, you know, the marginal, or the, the people that aren't quite as dedicated to hunting as myself sometimes.
The non, the non-Daniel Boones are going to go home.
They go home. They, the snow gets cold and it gets deep and it gets wet. Um, we checked, the Timmerman check station, well, we, we, uh, had about a twenty-seven percent harvest success.
Is that good?
It is. Um, little, not quite as good as last year, but pretty close. Um, at Mountain Home, we checked seven-hundred-and-seventy-six hunters. And so, uh, and we had about a twenty-five percent success.
So it's staying pretty close to the same way.
Things are looking really good this year. Lot, lot of four corn bucks, um, but, so we, we know we had good fall survival.
Do the numbers, this is interesting because you set up in one area, it was twenty-seven, another area twenty-five, virtually almost the same. Do those numbers stay pretty similar?
You know, it just depends. When you get over in Littlewood and the mountains got a lot steeper, we dropped clear down to twelve, thirteen percent.
I see.
However, when we finally get our harvest reports all in from the hunters, then they even about out about that twenty-six to thirty percent harvest success.
That's odd.
And so, well, it just, you know, I don't know. Sometimes when we're running the check stations, we, we run them one weekend. We run them a Saturday, Sunday. Um, you get two types of hunters. The hunters that have been up there for, for all week or four or five days that come out and those, and then you have the guys that just ran up there for the morning to hunt and they're, they're going to be up there multiple times and they're passing up deer, they're looking for something big. And so, um, but we, we've got good deer numbers this year. We're anticipating a good harvest success. Um, much of our region, we still get to go clear to the thirty-first on our general hunts. All our controlled hunts are going to the thirty-first. You're seeing a lot less people in fifty-four and fifty-five just because they've had such good success early on. I mean, if you draw a fifty-four, fifty-five tag, I mean, it's, it's almost a give me tag, I mean, a give me deer.
What's it like back up in there? I think they, how much snow do they have back up there?
You know, um, I was up there yesterday, um, up at, uh, what is it? Gibson Jack.
Yeah.
Um, or no, not Gibson Jack. It was, uh, I get confused with canyons because that's a canyon over in western Idaho.
Fifty-four?
Well, it was just up here at Diamondfield Jack.
Diamondfield.
And there was, uh, just a dusting, just a light dusting, a snow and so-
What's it like back at Coal Pit and back areas like that?
You know, it's muddy. It's really muddy. Um, we got a lot of rain up there, uh, the bottom's gone out of it. So give it a day or two before you head up there if you're concerned because, uh, that was the big thing that was driving people out of the hills, um, above Fairfield and over there by, uh, by Sun Valley is they had a foot and a half, two foot of snow on some of those passes.
Really?
And so people were getting stuck, the bottoms were falling out of the road, getting that gumbo. That's one thing that kills you down here, it's just so greasy and gumboey, it sticks to your tires.
There was a lot of big camps up there in fifty-four, set up around Coal Pit and back in further.
You bet. And so I had a, I had a fun trip up there. I was just up there, uh, mucking around a little bit, come around one corner, there's a fifty-inch bull moose standing a hundred yards off the road, you know, just looking at me. Drive up another, I mean, this is not early in the morning. It wasn't, it was eight o'clock, eight-thirty and all, and so pulled around another corner, there's a six-point bull elk standing over here and it's just like, I'm sitting here going, are we in Jellystone?
What is the, uh, open season now? Now, it's, uh, kind of a general bucks and does in fifty-four right now, isn't it?
Well, we got bucks and we got youth, we got youth doe hunts, we got, uh, we got some adult doe hunts that'll be coming up. We got elk muzzleloader that's going on right now with the elk rifle that's going to be kicking off and we've got some cow hunts that are going on right now. And, uh, you know, so there's a lot of folks up there milling around, but, uh, like I And, uh, you know, so there's a lot of folks up there milling around, but like I said, there's a lot of game, um, throughout the region and the general hunts, and I, I think we're gonna see a really good harvest.
Do you still hear, and I know there's a lot of animals up there, because I personally have seen them. I go up there probably more than most, and to areas that are not really, you know, on the beaten trail, if you will. And I know there's a lot of moose, a lot of elk, and a lot of deer up there. When I say moose, I mean, I think the numbers. Now, maybe I'm dead wrong, but I think the numbers have almost doubled in the last couple of years. Am I wrong?
Oh, you know, we're gonna, we're really putting a concerted effort in there, um, this year to, to get a better handle on what our moose population is, is because we have a lot of people seeing so many moose. Well, just anecdotal information, you know, when you're out there driving around, you see seven moose in a day from the road, we've got quite a few moose. There's kind of something weird going on. We did have, uh, we had a moose that, uh, died, um, up Third Fork, and we, we took some, uh, biological samples, blood and such like that, and we're sending it to Boise to have it run through our lab. And then yesterday, the reason I was up at Monument, I mean, up at, uh, Diamondfield Jack's, is we had another moose, the cow moose that had died.
Really?
So, and we're not, we skin them back, looking for bullet holes and stuff like that. They're up there this morning, I, because I had the radio show, I didn't end up going up there to help them, but they're pulling the moose out of the bog.
Something that might have been eaten, poisoned or whatever?
You know, we, we just don't know at this time, but it's kind of interesting.
Yeah.
And I don't want people to freak out and think that where you got a plague going on or something like that with moose. We don't, we don't know, but it's just kind of, when you have a large animal like that die-
Yeah.
You, you just kind of wonder. And a lot of people were pointing towards poaching and shooting, but that's why we skin the animals out and make sure. But, um, hopefully next time we're on the show, we'll have a little bit more information on that.
Okay, let me do a commercial break real quick. Hey, don't forget, this is something for you Kelton and your dog. Howl-o-ween. Howl-o-ween. Four Paws Annual Party and Pet Parade, Saturday, October twenty-ninth. What kind of a dog have you got?
My dogs would not be invited.
What kind of a dog do you have?
I have an English setter, I have a black lab, my wife has a black lab, and then I have a German short-
Okay, dress them up in a Halloween costume and you may win prizes. Oh, not you, but the dogs.
The dog.
Well, come to think of it, the way you dress sometimes, maybe you'd win a prize.
I could dress my one dog as super, surp, surp girl, because she just flies.
Okay. The parade judging is gonna be at one PM on the twenty-ninth. Free pictures will follow the parade, free refreshments, and they're gonna have all kinds of fun over there for you and your pets. Howl-o-ween. Four Paws Annual Party and Pet Parade, Saturday, October twenty-ninth at Four Paws Bed and Bath. Three seventy west, two hundred south of Rupert, four three eight four 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 four. And don't forget, Kelton will be there, but don't make fun of him.
They, they would not want my dogs there. They're a little rambunctious. You know the obnoxious little kid that screams all the time?
Yep.
My dog's-
That's your dog. Alright, all, one more good word. Redder Showcase, twenty-six eleven Overland in Burley. Don't forget the Harvest Value Sale. My goodness, great, great deals on a lot of items, up to twelve months, same as cash on approved credit. All the Whirlpool appliances and certain furniture on sale at prices you can't believe so low. Along with the Serta mattresses, twin size, starting at just ninety-nine bucks. Are you kidding me? It's not gonna last long. Get into Redder Showcase at twenty-six eleven Overland in Burley. You have got a segment on the sheet here that says, "Be Prepared When Hunting," and I think this is a topic that you and I've talked about in the past. Don't go up there in your tennis shoes, don't go up there with a light jacket, don't go up there with gloves and maybe not thinking about, "Ooh, what happens if I break down?" You have to be prepared.
You do. And, and when we have in climate weather like this, it, it's just reevaluate, I mean, re, resets that, why you have to do that, because we just have so many issues. The, and I mean, when I'm talking about prepared, I'm talking about first aid kits, I'm talking about everything. Uh, was working the check station last Saturday, and we get a call and a gentleman had taken his knife and driven it into his quad, um, in the top of his leg, and it had a big gut hook on it because he was, he was opening, uh, clean, pulling the, separating the height off the leg.
Ouch.
And it slipped out, and he ran that hook into his thigh, and then the knife rotated, and so he had a two-inch hook and about two and a half, three inches of blade stuck in his femur.
Oh my goodness.
Well, not in the femur itself, but in that quad muscle.
In the flesh, yeah.
And so, you know, fortunate for him, he had cell service because he was by himself. And then the paramedics were able to come in, and they had to lifelike him out because it was so-
What day was that?
Saturday.
I saw the helicopter fly up there in Deanna, was it Saturday the lifelike?
But it was the other direction, it was up by Fairfield.
I thought we had somebody up here Saturday also.
And we may have. And, you know, this time of year, lifelike gets pretty busy. You know, if you're, I, I was, you know, I was down in the South Hills, uh, not too long ago, and you get, it's deep enough that you get out of cell service down there. Um, I ended up a seven-mile hike out to get cell service-
Really?
From where I was at. And so people need to be cognizant of, of this type of stuff. Um, tell people where you're going.
Yeah.
Take the stuff you need if you have to spend the night.
Stop right there. Let's talk about that for a minute. Now, I don't go anywhere. I'm not trying to make myself better than anybody else, but you know, I don't want to break down. I don't want to have a problem that I'm not prepared for. And we absolutely, when we take our four-wheelers up there, I don't care if it's just on an afternoon ride or if we're gonna stay overnight or something, we take our, our first aid kits, we take something to sleep in, we take waterproof materials, all that stuff, right on the bikes. You can never, in my opinion, be too prepared.
No, and I'll put it this way, if something does go haywire and you've got all that stuff, the person that was mocking you for taking all that stuff will be wanting to use your stuff.
The first, yeah.
And so, you know, you need to have your water, you need to have some food, you need to have a way of communication, and like you said, just the waterproof, or shelter, fire, just some basic necessities and tell people where you're going.
And there are kits. Caller, we'll be right with you, stand by, but there are many, many kits, if you will, that you can go to Sportsman's Warehouse or anywhere, and they're very concentrated, consolidated, easy to carry type things.
You bet. Or you could easily put one together yourself. It's just whatever, ever you're, uh, feeling in the mood to do.
Absolutely. Caller, good morning, you're on the air.
Good morning, Zeb. This would be a question for Kelton and a warning. You know, buck fever is the worst thing of the hunting season. Do you agree?
Buck fever?
Yes.
Yeah, I, we, we have a lot of issues with that.
Well, I can, I can speak as a testimony of how important it is, because on the twenty-first of October nineteen sixty-seven, my companion and I were up there on Ibecks Peak, you know, just waiting for this season to open, and here come a couple of bucks up there, and we were standing side by side, and he accidentally shot me and blew my elbow all apart, because we were not, you know, we got buck fever.
Yeah.
And I want to, you know, just make people very aware of, it is an exciting time, but we've got to keep ourselves under control.
Absolutely. And I'm glad you mentioned that, Keith. We're gonna talk about that on the air. Thank you for bringing that up this morning. Thank you very much. You know, it's not only buck fever. Uh, I want to mention this too, because I've been hunting as little bit as I go hunting, and I've been in a duck blind with some guys, and oh my, sometimes quack, quack, or geese or whatever, and they don't look before they act.
You, you know, and, and that's, I think this is a case, what happens whenever anybody gets out of the house. You know, whether they're on vacation, I, I worked at a, an area over in Bear Lake, and it was like, uh, everybody would come to go vacation, left their brains at home. But, um, and sometimes we, we see that with hunting and people taking too long a shots, people not following up shots, people taking sound shots. Um, and for the most part, I, I'd say ninety-nine point nine of our hunters are really good people.
Yeah.
And it's just that one percent that, or that, that get a little bit twisted or get, you know, just don't quite follow the rules the way that they should. But no, this gentleman made a really good point. Just be sure of what's downrange of your shot, what's beyond your shot. Um, when I point my muzzle in the direction of that deer, is there anything else? I had a friend that he was leaning across the hood of his truck on a two-track, shooting at a deer, and shot three furrows through the hood of his truck before he realized that his scope was three inches higher than his barrel.
Oh.
And so he, when he would lean across, he shot and he was missing the animal.
Yeah.
He was shooting at a pronghorn, and, uh, it, it, because he just, he got excited, jumped out, decided to hurry and use the truck as a leaning post, and-
Shot his truck.
Shot his truck. We had another guy, his gun went off in a, in the check station, he's sitting here going, oh, I was gonna, he's gonna empty his gun. Well, the gun went off and shot through the floorboards and hit his transmission and shattered his, broke his transfer case.
Oh my goodness.
And that was over in Pocatello, and so just people needs, need to be ca, careful.
Absolutely. Stand by. By the way, don't forget Clark Kaufman, your District Twenty-five B representative. Clark Kaufman has served on the Revenue and Taxation Committee, Transportation and Defense Committees, and the Business Committee. He asked for your vote on November eighth. Paid for by the committee to reelect Clark Kaufman, Debbie Kaufman, Treasurer. What about pheasant season? I mean, I tell you what, I, what are you doing over there?
You got squirt guns. You got, this is like a kid's habit over here.
Play with every, I've never seen a grown man, I've got a little soft baseballs over there, I got horsies, I've got little squirt guns, everything just to satisfy you.
You got a little saddle. I'm a little ADD.
Yeah. A little. Pheasant season.
It kicked off this last weekend.
Yep.
You know, um, we've had really mixed reports. We're gonna continue. It's never gonna be back like it was in the sixty-seventies, you know, fifty, sixty-seventies and eighties, but, um, people are getting out and they're, they're getting a few.
Uh, now, I personally have seen quite a few right around here.
You have?
Yes.
I'll be over later this afternoon.
Oh, thank you very much. Remember what we were talking about safety just a minute ago?
Well, that's why I was coming, with my blinders.
Caller, good morning, you're on the air. Go ahead.
Is that me, Zeb?
Yes, it is, please. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, Kelton, we were up in the hills, South Hills, on Sunday, and helped pull that young moose out of the bog. And, uh, we waited and waited for fishing game to come up. Uh, she was alive and never dead, and the biologist was supposed to be there Monday morning at ten. And when we went back up, she, she had either got up and fell back in or something, but she was got, she was dead.
Yeah.
Just a little dismayed why fishing game wouldn't get up to us and, and help.
Well, what, the biggest problem was going on Sunday is we had four check stations working, and everybody was out in the field. Nobody got home until ten o'clock that night. Because we were working Fairfield, we was working Timberman, we was working, uh, Littlewood, and we had some people over in Sublet, and our officers were out. Sunday's one of our biggest client days when people are out hunting, and so we did, we, we got up there, um, Monday when we got the, all our camps back, and we had found that she had, she had died. There really wouldn't have been anything that we could have done for her anyway, because we don't give veterinary treatment for... It'll be interesting to see what's going on with her, and I do apologize if, if someone gave you that feeling that we would be up there that day. It's just- What was that?
Another cow has been-
Well, that, it's a, it's a yearling cow moose. It wasn't a calf, it wasn't this year's calf. That was, uh, that was a yearling cow that you guys had found up there.
Yeah, but she said there was another one too, right?
There was a small bull moose in Third Fork that was found.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Well, it's going to be interesting to find out what's wrong, and-
It will be.
But we, we tried our best. We-
Well, and we appreciate- Yeah, we appreciate the efforts.
Wanted to have a better outcome.
Yeah. Well, and it's tough because people get, you get attached to these animals, you see them, and it's hard for us when we see things like this happen, and-
I understand.
And so, but hopefully we'll get some, uh, information from the blood work and things like that and be able to see what's going on.
And by the way, when you do get that information, call me or send me an email, I'll put it on the air.
It'll, it'll take us, it'll take us probably six weeks.
Okay, six weeks. Thank you for your call, and I do appreciate your help. Thank you very, very much. Uh, we're gonna take a break in just a minute, but then we're gonna come back and talk, uh, anything more about the pheasant season before we leave.
No, the only other thing I wanted to jump on is that harvest report. We skipped that. Um, if you go, um, as soon as you get done with your hunting, if you guys can go to eight seven seven two six eight nine three six five, and you can report twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, whether you killed your deer, your elk, or your antelope. It gives us harvest date. This is some of the most important data that we collect every year.
Right.
Is the harvest success. We, we count the animals, we know what's going on, but then we need to know how many animals are harvested before we set next year's seasons, which happens in January. So please call us at eight seven seven two six eight nine three six five. And I'm gonna leave this with you, Zeb, so that you can remind folks again.
I will. And that is, uh, basically a harvest report, right?
The harvest report. How many days you hunted, how big of animal you hunted, whether you hunted, whether you didn't harvest anything.
Okay.
So it just gives us the, gives us basically the average on how many days people hunt, the size of animals they're-
Get closer to your mic.
Size of animals they're removing, or harvesting and things like that, so.
We're gonna have more with Kelton Hatch, the incredible Bulk, coming up with the fishing-
You're hurting my feelings.
I know I did. I really did a good job. Anyway-
I've been trying to lose weight.
I know, but it's not working. Yeah, we're gonna talk about waterfall season and officer after-hours call and trapping, and along with the commission meeting, all of that coming up along with your phone calls in the next half hour. And, uh, we'll have more with Kelton Hatch in just a couple of minutes. Now, back to our main studios, we'll be right back.
And now, back to Zeb at the Ranch on AM twelve thirty KBAR. To reach Zeb, call four three six twenty-two forty-four, or toll-free one eight six six nine two seven forty-five eighty-seven. And now, here is Zeb Bell.
November eighth, vote yes on HJR five. Your voice needs to be heard, and you should always be able to hold our state government accountable. Vote yes on HJR five. Don't let activist courts take away our legislators' authority to approve or reject agency rules. Vote yes on HJR five. Vote yes on HJR five, paid for by Speaker of the House Scott Bedekey, Representative Fred Wood, and Senator Kelly Anthon. Uh, waterfall season underway. Man, they are really shooting out there.
They are. And I forgot to do one thing. Can I jump back to pheasants for just one second?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Sorry about this, was, was kind of running there, but I forgot to mention that we do have nine wildlife refuges across the state, uh, WMAs, Wildlife Management Areas, that we release pheasants on. And so if people are having a rough time finding private property to hunt, Zeb won't let you hunt at his place and things like that, you can go to one of these WMAs. Um, our local one is Niagara Springs Wildlife Management Area. For twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents, you can buy a permit that allows you to harvest six birds. Typical pheasant hunting is, um, three birds a day, but if you hunt one of the WMAs, you can only harvest two, and then you mark it off, it's like a stillhead tag, so you have to mark it when you kill it, and, um, you can harvest up to six, and you can buy as many of these WMA permits as you want. It's kind of a fun place to go.
Yeah.
Big, open place, and so, um, youth under the age eighteen don't need a permit. They can just hunt with a regular hunting license.
Okay, now the waterfall, geese and the ducks. Man, a lot. There have been so many landing at Myrtle Lake and flying overhead. I'll bet you that there's literally thousands of geese over there.
There, there's a couple. There's a couple, and so, you know, people have been really saying they've had a really good early season waterfall. That's the thing, right now is kind of, uh, your, your corba, cone, what is that called? The cornucopia is overflowing with, with-
A plethora, plethora.
A plethora of opportunities for the sportsmen.
Are we going too fast for you?
We are.
Okay.
But there, there's a bunch, bunch of hunts going on right now, and the waterfall's really good.
Yeah.
And so, uh-
Why?
You know, we just had really good nesting success this year locally, and most of these birds that people are harvesting right now are local birds.
Are they, they're not headed out, right?
Uh, they're getting ready to.
Where?
You know, they'll fly, fly further south, down through Utah.
Downstate like St. George and that?
St. George, go down to Snowbird.
Really?
They'll head down into Mexico and, you know, and just wherever they can find a decent place. There's a lot of them that will winter out down, uh, in Salt Lake, and some of them will even go further south, but-
Really?
Um, the, the ducks, the northern ducks are nowhere near us yet because we just haven't had that kind of freeze up, but we-
But they're coming on down.
You bet. As soon as we get the freeze up, a lot of times seems like they'll, they'll move down, American Falls will get them first, then American Falls freezes over, and then they move into the Magic Valley.
Boy, there's a lot of geese at Myrtle Lake.
There, well, there's, I was, uh, all the way down. The, the tough part about goose hunting is just getting the opportunity to be able to hunt a lot of people's, uh, the fields and stuff like that, because you have to have permission. I want to remind sportsmen, even though you see waterfall setting in, uh, barley-filled stubble, you can't go shoot them because that's, unless you have permission. Because if it's a, uh, tilled or cultivated land, you have to have permission, and the landlord does not have to post that. And so this is one of the times that, one of the issues that we have the biggest problems with is waterfall hunting, just because it's, well, the buck fever type dill.
Yeah.
They see a whole bunch of geese out there and they can't hardly contain themselves. And so, uh, it makes it a lot funner hunt if you just go talk, knock on a few doors, talk to a few people, and don't do it that morning at four-thirty. Um, try to get ahold of them.
And legally, when can they start? Uh, right at sunup?
It's a half hour before sunrise. You need to go to your, uh, uh, waterfall regulations, and there is a shooting hours chart in there for each area, and it'll tell you what time shooting hours are.
Okay, we have a caller with a question. They want to ask you- Okay, we have a caller with a question. They want to ask you a question, and you have the knowledge to answer it.
Hopefully.
Yeah. Good morning, caller. You're on the air.
Yeah, hopefully.
Yeah.
I'm, I, I hope and pray every time I come on the show that I survive.
We have a bunch of geese that are trying to land in the field, but they haven't got the beets out yet. And we have this problem every year. So, as soon as they're out, you know where they're all headed. So, how do we keep them out?
How do you keep-
They usually go in and plant barley in there.
And then they pound your barley?
Oh, heck yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's, it's kinda like a golf course. It, it's tough. You know, um, hopefully you've got some kids or grandkids, or some neighbor kids, or somebody that you trust. The easiest thing to do is just get a few hunters out there and it'll, it'll haze them. We do have zon guns. What that is, is a propane cannon. And if you're having issues and you don't want sportsmen on there, you can come and, and pick up one of those zon guns from us. And um, it works for about two weeks. And then they start nesting on it because they get used to the popping. But um, it will haze the birds for a while. But the thing that, we have the same issue on our place over in Eastern Idaho, except we don't come back in with uh barley because it would, we just don't do well sp- planting.
Trying to keep them blowing, but then we don't want the irrigation lines all shot up either.
Yeah. Well, and I, I, I understand that. I don't know. There, there is some good folks out there. And if you, if you do a little bit of looking through, but I understand if you don't want to deal with that too, you can just come and grab one of those zon guns and um, or you can talk to us and we can actually ha- uh, give a permit so you guys can shoot cracker shells and haze them off of your field.
Well, I was gonna say, years ago, they brought us a box of those shells that explode.
Yeah. Those are the cracker shells.
They're, they're long gone. Huh?
Those are the cracker shells. And if you, and if you're having issues with that, call John Guthrie. He's our landowner sportsman's coordinator, and he'll, he'll, he's really good at, at getting out and helping, helping folks with uh different depredation type issues like this. And uh, he can get you lined out.
All right, caller. Thank you very much for your call this morning. Take care. Thank you. Um, I want to talk to you real quickly. Contact an officer after hours. Uh, what's the best way? I mean, you, like at 3:00 in the morning, give me that number so I can wake you up.
You've got it. But uh, you know, it, it's amazing. Well, this time of year, I get calls all the time.
I would imagine.
Yeah, you know, I mean-
You were really grumpy at 6:00 in the morning. I mean, folks, I gotta tell you, I called him and I just very professionally and politely said, uh, Mr. Hatch, you realize, of course, that you're scheduled to be on my program this morning. And there was kind of a, a thrashing and crashing and some vile statements. I mean, you're really ugly in the morning.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna call you Pinocchio. Because I'm not. The best part of the day for me is 6:00 in the morning, 5:30, because most of the time, I'm not talking to folks like you. But um, no, if you need to get ahold of an officer in the morning, and I, I apologize to this lady if they, if they had given him the, her on this moose, because I hate when we're not responsive on things like that. I hate when I hear stories like that, because we really do try to be as responsive as quick as possible. Um, a lot of times, uh, like this gentleman that I just talked to on landowners, we deal a lot with landowners. A lot of times the office, uh, those landowners have our numbers. They can text us and stuff like that. Um, but the easiest way, just for anybody, if you see a poaching violation going on, you can um, call the CAP hotline, 1-800-632-5999. CAP, Citizens Against Poaching, you're eligible for a reward. Um, they get ahold of us. If it's a, something that's going on, they get ahold of headquarters right then. We have people on call, and they will get that down the line as quick as possible.
Okay.
If it's a local deal and you forget that big, long number, you can call 911. All our officers are, I'm not, I'm not an officer. I, I, I can, I enforce Title 36 codes. Those are fishing game violations. Um, but our officers are post-certified. Um, they're, they work through dispatch in Twin Falls and Casia and all the, all the local counties around here. They can get ahold of them at home if there's something going on, or they will send a county sheriff or a uh ISP officer, depending on the severity of what else is going on and, and things like that. But you can get ahold of us pretty much anytime, day or night, um, through dispatch or um, at the CAP hotline.
Okay, gotcha.
Then the CAP hotline is, is, it's got somebody on it 24/7.
I've gotta do a commercial and a weather forecast, so stay tuned. More with the incredible bulk with the fishing game, Kelton Hatch. Good guy. I'd like to give him a hard time. Don't forget Clark Kaufman, your District 25B Representative encourages you to support and vote yes on HJR5, which is an amendment to the Idaho Constitution to ensure the separation of powers of the executive and legislative branches. Vote November 8th, yes on HJR5. And don't forget too, Clark Kaufman, for State Representative, uh, District 25B, paid for by the Committee to Elect Clark Kaufman, Debbie Kaufman, Treasurer. Weather forecast brought to you by Scarrow's Meats. 331 North Road, Jerome. Mmm, mmm, delicious. Changing the way we eat, one bite at a time. You better get ahold of them today. Your locally-owned custom meat processor for over 20 years. Processing also your wild game during this hunting season. Call them today at 324-7657. Scarrow's Meats. And right now, here's Gina with the weather.
Well, we hit midweek stride and weather for the rest of the week actually looks really nice. Partly cloudy skies is what we're expecting for today. High of 53, tonight low of 31. Tomorrow, partly cloudy and 60, with an overnight low of 34. 65 under sunny skies for Friday and for the weekend. Looks like mostly sunny skies. Highs are gonna be in the mid-60s. Yesterday's high was 40, 60, overnight low was 34. That is your weather for Zeb at Ranch.
Thank you, Gina. Excellent job. Scarrow's Meats, Don Scarrow and the crew serving you. Wonderful people that literally, they are your custom meat processor for over 20 years. Changing the way we eat, one delicious bite at a time, Scarrow's Meats. Kelton Hatch, Idaho Fishing Game. You know, I want to get into this. Uh, beginning trapping class is uh available. Tell us a little bit more about the dates that it's gonna be held.
Well, we've got a trapping class that we're going to, and I'm gonna be help teaching this, in a, a, a class at the Jerome office. And it's just introduce people to trapping. Um, since 2011, we've about doubled in trapping licenses in the state.
Now, trapping, and I'm gonna be blunt on this program. I think it's a very, very necessary activity. Uh, but yet there's a lot of enviros, et cetera, that are against it.
Oh, we, I, I threw this on our Facebook page and been getting pounded by a few people on just uh messages straight to me because they, they don't post them on the actual site, but they can send them to me directly. And no, there's a lot of animosity towards trapping. We, and part of the reason, that's why we're having this class, because we need trapping to help maintain certain populations of, of wildlife.
Absolutely.
And if you don't believe it, build a house near a creek and then wait until the beavers flood you out.
Yeah.
Because um, we do, I do, my son does a lot of work with landowners. I mean, he's 16 and he goes out and he uh catches beavers in people's irrigation systems-
Really?
And, and things like that, so they don't-
Is there a large beaver population here?
Well, there is. And there's, and we do a lot of live trapping. Um, and then he, we will transplant them and put them up in the South Hills or, or places where they're needed. But down in these irrigation streams, down around Myrtle and Hanson and Kimberly and stuff like that, um, they're not that needed because it just, they end up washing out laterals and-
Yeah.
And they flood people's houses and things like that. And so, but this is gonna be a basic trapping class. If you've ever been interested in learning how to trap, it's gonna be just basic sets, basic methodology on how to do it, how to avoid bycatch. And bycatch is non-targeted animals. And so, once you learn the basic concept, that's one of the biggest things, uh, I, one of the biggest negative comments I get about trapping is, well, it's just indiscriminate. You catch whatever walks by. Well, you do, but you set things in certain areas where certain animals move through. And uh, and you can do a lot by adjusting pan tension. Uh, the pan is what triggers the trap, uh, to avoid smaller animals. Um, you know, or just where you place it, animals that don't travel in that area. And so, there's minimal bycatch. Um, once you, you figure out or understand the methodology behind trapping.
So, there's a lot of the learning process.
There is. And the thing is, is we can't teach everything and a lot of it, but it, it just gives people a good starting point. Uh, I mean, it's really good if, if first-time trappers can find a mentor that's been doing it for a while to go out and learn some other tricks of the trade and stuff.
Is there special licensing for trappers?
There is. And that's the other thing I wanted to get to. Um, after uh, right now, the legislature put, pushed through a deal that um, we have to have, we're gonna have mandatory trapper's education. Anybody that purchased a license after 2011, beginning around July 1st, 2018, even if they had a trapping license from 2011, are going to have to take a mandatory trapping class.
Now, in this class, do they learn the do's and don'ts and have to pass a test?
You do. We'll have a written test. We'll, we'll go through, we'll do uh, show different types of sets, um, how to set traps, um, the rules and regs that you can't have exposed bait. And if you do have exposed bait, you have to trap X amount of yards from it so you don't catch avian predator, uh, you know, avian predators and things like that. Cause I mean, if you expose, you got a dead moose out there and somebody decides to trap near it, you have to be so far back because the birds will be hopping around and, and you're trying to protect them and, and, and things like this. And so, it, yeah, it's gonna be a really good class. Uh, the gentleman that's teaching, Jake Powell, uh, super knowledgeable trapper. He'll be teaching it with me. He's done it for years and it'll be a fun class.
You said the interest has doubled.
It has. And the biggest reason, because of wolves. Because they put the wolf trapping in. And we actually have wolf trapping in the South Hills. And there is another class before you can wolf trap that you have to take, and that's our wolf trapping class. This class, uh, and we, we feel like we've almost hit, last time we offered one, then we didn't get very many people biting to take the wolf trapping class, because we've taught several of them in the area. Um, but we have had a lot of interest in this basic trapping-
I see.
Uh, class. And so, uh, you can go to the fishing game website, fishinggame.idaho.gov. Um, go down to Other Classes, click on Trapper's Ed, and our class is the only one listed there. And you can sign up. There's, as of this morning, I put, put it on there yesterday, and we've got like uh 10 seats left, I think-
Yeah.
Right now. And so, it's filling up quick and so-
Well, the US Fish and Wildlife Service is trapping kitty cats down in Florida, not to be confused with the fishing game. And they're letting-
Their feds, we're state.
Yeah, they, they're letting the vermin, the rats reign supreme, but they're killing the kitty cats. And that shows you, I think, very, very poignantly, how stupid the US Fish and Wildlife Service is.
They, they do some nice things to them. And I don't know the full, I'm not gonna badmouth them until I've read the article on why they're doing it.
I will provide it for you at the end of this program.
Okay, well, I appreciate that.
Commission meeting. And why are you red-faced over my comment?
You just, well, it, you know, they're, they're not quite a sister agency, but they're a cousin. And so, I try to, try to-
Don't kiss them.
No.
Okay. What about the commission meeting? Say something.
The commission meeting. The commission meeting is going to be November 16th and 17th in Lewiston.
I see. Are you going?
You know, I probably won't.
Okay, because you're gonna be on the air that day, the 17th, I think.
Probably.
Yeah.
And so, uh, but if anybody's interested in going up, commenting on anything, the way the department's functioning and working, um, go up there, listen in. It's a good way to see the in- intricate, inter workings of the department.
Absolutely. And learn.
And learn.
Yeah.
You bet. It's, it's quite uh, it, it's quite enlightening to see, you go up there, you see the first night on the 6th, 16th, we'll have a public testimony meeting. And it's really amazing the diversity of uh people that get up and talk to you. And you may, you may have one guy right here that wants, you know, everything open or just wants to hunt with muzzleloaders-
Yeah.
And no rifles and no bows.
Are you a muzzleloader hunter?
You know, if-
I thought you said you had one.
I do. I've, I've harvested elk and deer and coyotes with my mu-
You're a pretty good shot then.
Well, you, you, I, I, I've always believed in the old adage, if I get it close enough, I can hit it. So-
Yeah, but I mean, we're talking about single shot. And I know that you're, you a graduate of Utah State University and played football. So, that means you're a little slow at reloading, aren't you?
Well, a little bit. That's why I have somebody packing another one.
Hand me that other one. No. Remember the animal.
I have the rotating barrel.
I see.
You got two barrels on it. You shoot and then you rotate.
So, do you wear a coonskin cap and leathers with fringes and the pouch and everything?
I do not.
You don't?
I do not. I'm more-
You're taking away from the uh real aura of authenticity.
I, I like not freezing. I like, uh, I like uh the new fabrics. I do wear a lot of wool because it keeps you warm.
Yeah, but really, these, these old muzzleloaders, I mean, uh-
They're fun. It, it's just fun. It just gives you, the, the reason a person changes and tries a muzzleloader or tries archery equipment-
Yeah.
Is because, number one, they're finally tired of all the people that are out rifle hunting. There's just too many people around.
Yeah.
And so, it just gives you a different season.
All by yourself.
All by your lonesome.
Yeah.
And so, it, it's fun. And typically, the reason we have muzzleloader hunts and we have archery hunts is to reduce harvest. So, it gives people lots of opportunity, but we do have a reduced harvest in those hunts.
Make a deal with you, okay? Next month, when you come on the, the report for the fishing game, bring your Davy Crockett gun.
My smoke pole.
Yeah. And after the program's over, I want to shoot that thing.
Okay.
You got a promise now.
If I remember.
If, I'll call you at 4:00 in the morning.
That's fine.
Okay.
My wife will answer it at that time.
I can see your enthusiasm for me shooting that muzzleloader is really not there.
Uh, no, I'm probably gonna load 120 grains of powder and put a 400 grain lead bullet in there.
That's what George did up at Albion. Don't do that to me.
We'll see if we can roll you.
Huh?
We'll see if we can roll you.
I dusted the back end of my Wranglers, I'll tell you that.
It's more of a push than a kick.
Yeah, right. Hey, listen, don't forget the big fall tire sale going on at your Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers. All seven locations serving you, and service is the key word. They've got tires like the Open Country MT for your pickups and SUVs on sale. With the best tire value promise in the industry, whatever the road throws at you, from potholes to nails, any road hazard, our free guarantee protects you. Check it out today, all the tires at the big fall tire sale with Lane and Rupert, Dave on Blue Lakes and Twin, Mike and Buell, Mike and Jerome, the Twist family and Paul, Daniel on Poleline in Twin Falls, and my buddy Randy on Overland in Burley. Shocks and struts, front end alignments, batteries, all of this and more at your Magic Valley Les Schwab Tire Centers. Thank you very much. Caller, real quick, I've got 30 seconds. Go.
What's the protocol on a tag that goes through the washer?
On a tag that goes, if you, can you read it at all?
Yes.
As long as you can read it, uh, just use it.
Okay.
All right.
Name and the dates and everything, you can read.
The what?
The name and the dates.
The name and, and the date.
Can you not read the, the unit and the hunt?
Oh, yeah. I mean, you can read it. You can just, it's obvious that it went through the washer.
And, and that's fine. As long as, as long as it's still legible, just use it.